Roll call, please, Gail.
Mayor Sticks.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wierich.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts. Oh, I see him on the screen. Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
As usual.
Thank you, Gail, and welcome to the October 26, 2021, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Randy, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Flag is to our right, and the audience is to the left. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy, and may we have approval of the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Second.
Ryan?
Aye.
Okay, good, all right, thank you. And we were going to have a presentation by Patrick Maynard, who's the Director of the Office of Emergency Services. He cannot make it, so we'll reschedule that, James?
Yes, we are rescheduling most likely for December, but we'll confirm that.
Okay, thank you, and any commission reports?
Nope. I don't, Gail, has anybody registered for commission reports?
I see Mr. Quilisi on here. Let me open this up and, oh, I, James Hahn, if you could make me co-host so I can bring Mr. Quilisi in. Oh, there we go, thank you. Mr. Quilisi, are you here to speak during the commission reports?
No, I'm, I'm here to speak to the tiny homes issue later in the agenda.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so we'll move on to public communication. We have three this evening, and just a reminder that this is the part of the meeting to comment on items not on the agenda, and because we cannot discuss them because they're not on the agenda. So when you make a comment, we're really happy that you're here. We are not ignoring you. We can't discuss it, but thank you so much for being here. So we'll begin with Elodie Jane Register, and then we'll go to Maya Register, and then Brian Akins.
Mayor, prior to receiving comments, can we acknowledge that we are starting at 6:40? And there might be additional public comments as people come in between now and 7 o'clock, thinking that the council meeting was supposed to start at 7?
Actually, yeah, thank you, Randy, it's 6:30, remember, we changed it?
Did it say 6:30?
Yep.
Oh, well, then I stand corrected, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, all right, Elodie, are you ready?
I was confused for a second.
Getting assistance from that.
For getting some help, thank you.
I'm your son of a gun. I'm gonna get a monitor for you.
Hello, my name is Elodie Register, and I live in England. I come to Ojai every year, and this year I've noticed lots more animals in the city. For example, in my grandparents' garden, there are lots of deer where normally there are not. I also heard on the news that mountain lions have been hurt on the highway. My question is, what is the council's position on animals being displaced by climate change like in our current drought? And how can we keep them safe?
Thank you, Elodie, much appreciated.
Mayor, may I make a short comment?
Of course.
I'm very proud of Elodie, and soon to hear from Maya, my granddaughters, I wanted to mention that Elodie started a GoFundMe site to clean up, get pledges for cleaning up litter and planting trees. So I'm very hopeful for the next generation's environmental awareness.
Wonderful, inspiring. All right, next we have Maya Register, then Brian Akins, and then Bill Miley.
Come on, Maya. Speak up.
Hello, my name is Maya Register. I had, I had to go to the hospital here last weekend. The doctors and nurses were very nice, but the hospital was so cold that I was shivering. Can I please be just a little bit warmer? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maya.
Thank you.
Next we have Brian Akins.
You gotta follow that, Brian.
Actually, I'm punting because I have the number six on that blue card next to what I'm gonna speak on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, never mind, you wanna come back?
I'll be back for a commissioner report and comment on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian, okay, next we have Bill Miley.
Good evening. I want to talk about the article in the LA Times on something about the Haywire earthquake fault article, which was huge, and the Haywire Fault that goes all the way down California, but principally in the Bay Area. Besides reading the article, I read the six-page summary on the U.S. Geological Survey website, which I linked to you in my email. It was impressive about the kind of power outages and long disruptions that might occur. In my memory, I thought of past city discussions of having a solar site in Ojai for green energy, off-the-grid supplies, as Chris Stanch of the Wildfire Council says, "A microgrid." Maybe we should discuss this again soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Gail, any public communications on Zoom?
Let me ask if anyone is in the Zoom queue who would like to speak during public communications. If you can use the raise hand option and raise your hand, I'll call on you. And nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, thank you, Gail, all right, we'll move on to the consent calendar, a motion to approve everything?
Move approval.
Second.
Great, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ryan? Great, all right, thank you, all right, we'll move on to number two, the public hearing. It's the Second City Council Redistricting Public Hearing. Receive input from residents regarding communities of interest. So we'll get to talk about the software that we're using, and James, you have a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, actually, I didn't expect us to get through the first items so quickly.
It's Maserati night.
It's Maserati night, yeah.
So we actually have a time certain of 7 o'clock for this item. Because it's a legally required public hearing, we had to set a time, and we cannot start the item before that time. So my recommendation or request would be that we would start, go to another item, and then start the redistricting public hearing after that item.
Okay.
And I'll just add that that requirement is part of the new Fair Maps Act, the new state law governing the redistricting process. It dictates that these hearings start at a precise time.
Okay, great, thank you, all right, well, let's move on to number three, discussion item. It's the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending accessory dwelling unit requirements to create a two-year pilot program for tiny house regulations in the ADU. So, James, is there a presentation on this?
Yes, just, and we'll, we'll keep it brief, but of course, we'll answer any questions. We have discussed this item a few times over the last couple of months at, at city council meetings, and so I won't completely revisit it, but the, the ordinance is an ordinance that essentially allows movable tiny houses to be allowed within the city, a limited pilot program of 10 tiny homes per year for two years, that would treat those tiny homes as ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which means that the, they can be added on to a property as long as they are accessory to a primary structure and behind, between the primary structure and the rear setback. So in other words, a movable tiny home would be allowed in, in a backyard. The tiny homes would be required to be built to certain standards and reviewed by the Community Development Director and the Building Official to ensure those standards are met. The key standards that we talked about at the last council meeting is we've included some additional fire hardening requirements, such as requiring a Class A roof and requiring that they be built to what is called the NFPA Fire Hardening Standards. And so they will have those additional fire hardening standards. Other than that, they would be, essentially be tiny houses built, or I'm sorry. Well, so, let me scroll a little quickly. Other than that, so that's the ordinance that's, that's returning to council. Again, it's a 10-year, or a two-year, 10 tiny home per year maximum pilot program for movable tiny homes within, within the backyard. So with that, we'll answer any questions, but that is the, the basics of the ordinance that's being presented for adoption. It was introduced at the last meeting, so.
Okay, any questions? And just a reminder, staff questions are just questions, so let's make sure we don't start opining during this point, save that for deliberation or discussion. Any questions from anyone?
No.
Ryan? Nope.
Public comments?
Yep, Gail, any public comments?
So I believe Mr. Quilisi said that he would like to speak. If there's anyone else also in the queue, in the Zoom queue, if you would raise your hand, I'll go ahead and call on you, and I'll bring Mr. Quilisi into the meeting to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Quilisi, you should go, you should be able to speak now, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Gail. With regard to these, I note that in the text of the resolution and therefore the ordinance, that the tiny homes on wheels, on permanent permitted foundations are ADUs, and they are separate residential dwelling units from the primary. As I understand the law and the regulations of the various agencies involved here in the Ojai Valley, this means, and these, and they are classified as newly constructed ADUs. That is, they are not conversions of existing structures, like you might change a garage into an ADU. So because they are newly constructed ADUs, they will be subject to a capacity charge from the Ojai Valley Sanitary District. Second, and, and even with proportional rates, we're talking about a substantial amount of money. Second, my understanding of the bond that was voted in to allow Casitas Water District to purchase Golden State Water, that bond is being paid off not on a parcel basis, but on a residential unit basis. If I'm wrong, please someone correct me, but I believe that is correct, and that would mean that addition of an ADU, in particular this type of ADU, would mean that the parcel owner will now owe two payments per month on the water bond, rather than just one. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments, Gail?
No further public comments.
Okay, we'll start discussion.
I'm just gonna, you know, we've discussed this at length. I think that Mr. Quilisi's comments are correct, but they apply to any ADU of the newly constructed type, so it's not specific to tiny homes. So I'm gonna just try to cut to the chase and move approval, see where it goes.
Okay, I would, I'm just gonna say and be consistent with what I have been saying the last couple of meetings. I'm not comfortable voting yes on this because I believe that we, if we do this outside of the ADU law and make a brand-new ordinance for the city of Ojai, that we can deed restrict, deed restrict the tiny home pad and prioritize their availability for very low and extremely low-income households. This avoids tiny homes becoming a part of the larger state mandated gentrification machine. And I'm gonna hang in there because I, I think it's possible. So do you have a motion?
So we have a motion, and I'll second Councilman Wierich's motion. And now can we open it up to comments?
Public comments?
Discussion. My concern.
Excuse me, can we? Yeah, we have public comments, we're in discussion now.
We're closing the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
Do you have a comment?
Yes, I do, so we've, we've closed the public hearing, we've had a motion and a second, and we're gonna have a final discussion. So I'm glad that Mr. Quilisi brought to the attention to all future residential owners in the community, residential house, I might want to word this right, but personal owners, that they should expect an increase in their, in that utility rate for the buyout of the Golden State Water District. So I think that's important that he brought that up, in fact, I'm glad he did because none of us did. So I think it's important that the community know that. Two, I just had one question. The tiny homes we're specifying that have to be on, on a frame that's movable, does that mean that the access that we're allowing these future ADUs and tiny homes to be moved into someone's backyard has to be motorized getting it there? Or can it be craned into the backyard?
The ordinance allows for either by not being specific, so it could be craned with appropriate insurance and permits in place for a crane.
Okay, that was my only question, Mayor.
I, I'd like to comment on that. These are not always easy to move, they can be very challenging to move, and that's very important for the public to know because they could be larger than the gate to the backyard, for example. So for the, for anyone tuning in late, what we're basically passing is, is an attractive small house, but instead of it being on a foundation, it's on a movable foundation. But it'll, it, the criteria in the ordinance is that it look like a very attractive, aesthetic, small house with a deck, and all the regulations that apply to other accessory dwelling units will apply to the, to, to these types of tiny houses.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ryan?
No, I will say that the, you know, I, I think at one point, Councilman Rainey, I did bring up that, and that's the disappointing part about the Measure V bond is that it was, I, I think it was actually a mistake on Casitas' part that they included the, by unit charge, where they didn't actually mean to, which is incredibly frustrating. But, yeah, I think, I think Mr. Quilisi made a good point. We are very concerned, these aren't gonna be as inexpensive as some people think, but it is an opportunity to find another way that other people might be able to find more housing, and even if it's not as inexpensive as we wish it could be, it is another option. It gives people some more flexibility in trying to add housing in a community that doesn't have a lot of space for it, and it's definitely a lot cheaper than trying to build a new home. So I, I'm all for the adding some flexibility, this is a pilot project, and let's see if it'll work, is my opinion, and if it doesn't, we can always modify it or change it there.
I agree.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second, so may we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
No.
Mayor Protem Wierich?
Yes.
Okay, great, all right, thank you very much. It is 10 till 7, we can move on to number four. James?
Yes, it's still too early for number two.
Okay, and actually, we have one more public comment, Dr. Halverson? Thank you.
Maybe we give Dr. Halverson the seven, eight minutes here, Mayor, and that way we'll be right at 7.
We'll call the presentation. Jim, you can speak till 7. Enjoy yourself.
Well, good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to take, I realize I have three minutes, it may take five, and I'll, if you need to say time, I'll talk faster, but I'm here, I'm here basically just to provide my medical opinion on COVID-19 and mostly focus on vaccinations. I had the opportunity to hear some comments a couple of weeks ago, and felt that it might be nice to present a physician's point of view also. So my qualifications, I've been a board-certified family doctor for almost 40 years. I've lived in Ojai and worked here since 1987. I have, our practice, which we have five providers, has about 5,000 patients who live or work here in Ojai. So I know a, a large percentage of the people who live here. I'm very interested in this pandemic, I've written over 60 articles for the Ojai Valley News. I tried to make those articles neutral. I spent several hours each week researching those articles. I feel like I know where to go to get proper information, at least information that I feel very comfortable with. I'm not a vaxer, and I'm not an anti-vaxer. I've got a large number of my patients in the practice who don't want any vaccines. They're still my patients, I don't condemn them. I try to educate them about the values of vaccines, but I certainly don't hold anything against people who don't get vaccinated. I'm not in favor of vaccine mandates for kids 18 and over who are in school, but I am in favor of vaccinating those kids. I know that our school board has no legal authority to go against the state requirement, that all students will need to be vaccinated eventually, and likely that's gonna be happening beginning in the fall semester of next year. Briefly, here are facts, then I'll get to vaccines. A, masks are effective, they reduce aerosol spread. The university I graduated medical school from, Duke University, along with several others, did some very fine studies that clearly showed that aerosol spread is markedly reduced by masks. B, social system distancing works, I hope that's not controversial anymore. Think of COVID-19 being spread like smoke. When we speak, our aerosol goes out, it's much safer to be outside, and if you're inside, it's much safer to be farther away from people. I hope that's not in question anymore. Three, vaccine works, vaccines work. If you look at the current numbers in Ventura County, which are all available at www.venturacountyrecovers.org, the current case rates in our county are nine cases per day for 100,000, which is about equal to 77 new cases per day. The rate for unvaccinated individuals is 17 per 100,000, and the rate for vaccinated individuals is 4 per 100,000. The lowering of rates has been shown across all age groups, and it's broken down, if you want to go to the county website, including recent data that was submitted by the FDA for five-to-11-year-olds, that vaccines are effective at lowering case rates. In Ventura County specifically, of the 537,000 people in the county that have been vaccinated fully, there have been 3,844 breakthrough cases, which is a rate of about .7% for 100. Of those, 190 or about 1 in 3,000 individuals fully vaccinated have had to be hospitalized, and 36 or about 1 in 15,000 vaccinated individuals have passed away, unfortunately. The vaccines never were touted as being 100% successful in preventing disease, nor were they touted as being 100% successful in preventing severe illness or death, but they are very successful in doing that. As a result of mandates, whether you agree with them or not, in the state of California, California currently has the lowest rate of cases in the nation at 61 cases per 100,000. The average in the United States is 151 cases per 100,000. And, and four states, Montana, Wyoming, Idaho, and Alaska, which are the four highest, are over 450 per 100,000, or about seven and a half times the current California rates. Vaccines are widely accepted worldwide, because this is a worldwide pandemic. 3.8 billion individuals have been vaccinated, 3 billion of them are fully vaccinated. In the United States, 190 million are fully vaccinated, which is almost 60% of our total population. In Ventura County, 81% of eligible individuals have had one dose, and about 75% are fully vaccinated. This includes 83% of the people who live in the Ojai Valley in the 93023 area code, and 76% of those people are fully vaccinated. In addition, in the county, 67% of kids aged 12 to 17 are now fully vaccinated. And also, a recent study released showed that approximately 65% of parents of five-through-11-year-olds will get their children vaccinated when the vaccine is approved by the FDA. Vaccines are safe, and I apologize, I know I'm way past three minutes. There are two main symptoms that we do to, or two main systems that monitor this, the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, or VAERS, which is cosponsored by the CDC and the FDA, and is available to all individuals who've been vaccinated. They are able to self-report any side effects. We also have the Vaccine Safety Data Link that is overseen by the CDC Immunization Safety Office. This data link system has been in place for years and has monitored the safety of other vaccines. Currently, the data link has looked at millions of people who've received the messenger RNA vaccines, specifically at 23 serious outcomes, very serious outcomes, including heart attack, respiratory failure, anaphylaxis, Guillain-Barre syndrome, blood clots, stroke, and heart inflammation. With the messenger RNA vaccines, only heart inflammation with a rate of about 6.3 cases per million in males were increased. Two patients in that group required ICU admission, no deaths were reported, fortunately. With the J&amp;J vaccine, venous thrombobulism, which you're well aware of from several months ago, which caused unfortunately strokes and blood clots in primarily women between the ages of 18 per 50 as a rate of 7.5 per million. Of course, there are many, many less severe reactions reported, including pain, redness, swelling at the ejection site, fatigue, headache, muscle aches, chills, fever, nausea. Most of these symptoms do go away within 48 hours. It is very true that younger, and this is, I'm, this is why I do not recommend vaccine mandates for students age 18 or below. It is true that younger individuals are at very low risk for serious diseases or death from COVID-19. In fact, boys aged 12 to 15 are at least as likely, if not more likely, to get cardiac side effects from the vaccine than actually to be hospitalized from COVID-19. Remember, though, that the risk of, of cardiac side effects in this age group is about 1.6 boys per 10,000 boys immunized, so it is not high. And of that, about 1 in 20,000 boys will be hospitalized because of the cardiac side effects. Importantly, and the reason I favor vaccines for children, kids under 18, is that these children still serve as a reservoir for the virus, which allows the virus to continue to perpetuate and be exposed to people who are more, who could become more seriously ill. And the longer the virus continues to be in the population, the further chance of developing future mutations exists. So I think it is important to try to lower the risk and the prevalence of the disease in this younger age group, although it does not seriously affect them. I currently have a two-year-old grandson who has COVID-19, and I will tell you, even though he's not very sick, it is very scary when your daughter calls and says your two-year-old grandson is home with 102 fever and a bad cough and just got positive for COVID-19. I don't recommend that for, that feeling for anybody. Fortunately, we got a picture of him today, he was sitting inside the dryer, smiling, so I think he's doing better. Thank goodness, that was day five. In my office with several thousand patients vaccinated, I hear about self-reported minor side effects all the time. I am automatically notified if any one of, all of my patients who are seen at the emergency room for any reason and who are hospitalized. Of the 5,000 or so that have been vaccinated in my practice, not by me, but by public health or pharmacies, I have had, we have had three patients who've gone to the emergency room because of vaccine reactions. We've had none hospitalized, and no one has died. Now, that's only 5,000 people, but that's 5,000 people in Ojai, so I think that's at least representative of my experience in this office. I do want to emphasize also that it's very obvious, unfortunately, that mask requirements are gonna continue for a while. The current guidelines just released by our public health officer say our case rate has to get down to seven cases per 100,000 or lower. Although our, our vaccinated people already have reached that case rate, unfortunately, our unvaccinated are still at 19 per 100,000, and that's gonna make it harder to reach that case rate. That's one of three criteria. The second is that our hospitalizations have to get down to less than, they currently are, which is 20 to 30 in the ICU. And third, we either have to have eight weeks pass since the COVID-19 vaccine is authorized for emergency use. And third, we either have to have eight weeks pass since the COVID nineteen vaccine is authorized for emergency use authorization for five to eleven year olds, which I just heard today, the FDA Advisory Committee recommended that it be approved by the FDA and then it has to be approved by the CDC. So we're at least looking at another eight weeks from early November. Or if we reach eighty percent of our county residents fully vaccinated, we could, that will meet that criteria. Unfortunately, it's seventy four point three percent and with a large amount of people that are not going to get vaccinated, I think it'll be hard for us to reach that prior to eight weeks from now. So we likely will still have mask mandates into January. And even when those mask mandates are stopped, they're going to be stopped for vaccinated people. Unvaccinated people, as was the case back before the mask were put into place, were required to still wear masks indoors. So it will continue to be, there will continue to be mandates likely for a while for people who are not vaccinated. Thanks for letting me go way over my time. I appreciate all of the things that all of you do. And know most of you personally and admire all of you. I do want to be very clear in understanding for the record, because I know everybody up here understands it, that our city council does not have the right to tell our school district to not vaccinate kids. Only at the state level. If you want, if people have a concern about that, they need to take their concern to the state that issued that mandate. And also, our city council can talk to the public health officer and say that they feel that Ojai shouldn't follow the current mandates that are keep us masked for another couple of months. But only the public health officer can change that rule, not our city council. Our city council has plenty to do. And I think I do approve of the statement that I've heard so many times and is so not true in this pandemic. Is politics does not belong in healthcare. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Halverson.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, we will move on to number two, the public hearing. This is the second city council redistricting public hearing to receive input from residents regarding communities of interest. So you have a presentation, James?
Yes, thank you. And before we start, I will note we are holding these public hearings bilingual. So anybody who is interested in participating in Spanish, you can click the globe button at the bottom of the Zoom screen and you can participate by hearing in Spanish and also sign up to speak and they'll be able to translate for that as well. So so and in the, you know, and that's part of, as the city attorney mentioned earlier, the Fair Maps Act and specific requirements that we have to meet in our process for redistricting. So as part of that, this is the second public hearing of four that will be required in our redistricting process. As kind of just a reminder, we go through the redistricting process every ten years to reflect any changes in the census. And so we're going through it now and we would go through it again in, most likely in twenty thirty one. And so this is the redistricting following the twenty twenty census. And so one of the things we try to do during these public hearings is we give the opportunity for the public to make comments regarding what are called communities of interest, which are groups of like people that can be brought together for representation in these public hearings and also via a forum on our redistricting webpage. Anybody can submit comments about their, their community of interest and and submit that to the city for consideration as part of that redistricting process. And so along with that, kind of the next step in our process is the city, when we went through our redistricting proposals and selected our partner, which is Redistricting Partners for the redistricting. The city also obtained some software called District R software that allows residents to actually go in and draw maps and submit those maps. And so today Gabriella from Redistricting Partners is here to explain that software and give a little information because it is going live and people can start using it now in anticipation of the next two public hearings, which will be in January and February. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gabriella.
Sorry, I think I was on mute. Thank you so much, James, for that introduction. Give me a second, I'm going to share my screen. Can you see my screen all right?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
All right, great. All right, well, as James mentioned, my name is Gabriella Morales and I am one of the redistricting managers with Redistricting Partners. We work with the city to provide data and outreach. As James mentioned, a big part of redistricting is including community of interest input. So thank you so much for coming because your input and your voice is so important to this process. Public input is pivotal to redistricting and I hope that you will all submit some of your input, whether that be today or in person, online. There's so many ways to submit your input. And the reason we rely so much on public input is that way we can draw lines in a way that is fair for as many people as possible. So as James mentioned, the city does have a software available called District R. And this is a public mapping tool to allow residents to draw their own communities of interest. I will go over the demonstration a little later after going over some data points. So some, something about the map submissions is you can go to District R and submit a map. And the two types of input you can do are a community of interest map, which is you can do from now all the way through the end of the process and district plans based on twenty twenty census data. So this began at the release of the data, the final census data came out in September. And you can continue to submit maps based on census data all the way through the final adoption. So currently, this is what the city of Ojai looks like. These are the current lines, you can see districts one through four. This may look familiar to some of you. And here is some of the data that was collected through the twenty twenty census this year. As you can see, District One is over deviation. So one of the things with, in the Fair Maps Act is that we want to have districts that are of equal population. And so getting to that number, we created some data from the census. And so if you see District One, it is over five percent deviation. So in order to make it equal population and to have the same exact number or close to throughout all the districts, you would have to take out ninety five people out of the district. And then District Two, it is underpopulated by four point nine percent. And District Three is underpopulated by eight percent. And District Four, overpopulated by seven point nine percent. So one thing to also note is that the deviation number right here in the middle is not population growth or population decrease. But rather, it is the number that is away from having equal population throughout the districts.
Yeah, and real quick Gabrielle, I'll note, we are watching on a TV that's some distance away. So the fine print is difficult to see. So I will, what we'll do is we'll post this presentation on the redistricting webpage and we'll send it out as well tomorrow. But, but I think the point that the software and the presentation has data on the showing the different districts and the populations and demographics is well taken.
Absolutely, thank you, James. So.
I'm sorry, one second, dear. Alls I'm trying to say is that what you're, I think what you're trying to point out is if someone is going to use these maps to draw districts, that they need to be thinking about the number of individuals in each of these districts. And I think that's what you're trying to show on these graphs that none of us can see. But I think that's important that someone who's drawing or drafting their own understands that premise.
If I could add one more point to that, Councilman Hany, well put. Not only think about the numbers, but think about the reality that the four districts that are drawn need to be roughly equal in population. And that might mean, that in fact, it does not mean equal in area or equally perceived area. It's about census data population. And our population is not evenly distributed, so we're going to end up with smaller, littler districts. And then I'll turn it back to Gabriella to sort of provide an overview. The other issue is the existing deviation is too high. So the current maps could not be maintained exactly as is.
Yes, thank you for that. And something to think about is although this is census data, when we were gathering population, so as you can see down here as well, or maybe not, I'm sure the screen is a little smaller over there. But down here, we are also talking about citizen voting age population. So when we are gathering this data, this is, it's not just about who is a voter. We're talking about people, not necessarily citizens or voters. This means that, you know, a child of five years old is just as important as somebody who's seventy five years old. So anybody living in the city and in a district is just as important, no matter status or age or eligibility to vote. So if we're looking here, coming back to the deviations, we are shy of fifteen point nine percent of a deviation. And the way we got this number is by adding together the absolutes of the lowest deviation and the highest deviation. So the district with the lowest deviation is District Three and the district with the highest deviation is District Four. You can look at the lines a little closer here. Here's District One. You can see here with the census, this is the data collected for race and ethnicity. We have other, Latino, Asian, Black. And then this, the bottom bars are for citizen voting age population. And down here at the very bottom is the same thing we saw on the last page, but specific to District One. And here the same thing with District Two. And District Three here as well. And finally, here you have District Four.
Could I ask what that hole is?
The hole?
The hole in four, the white hole.
It's a hole in the city limits.
Oh, that's city limits, okay.
Yeah, the city has not annexed the parcel in the middle there, which I confess I forget off the top of my head what it is. I think it's one of the ag parcels.
Oh, I see the square up here.
Yeah, on the right on the screen.
So, so yes, that is an unincorporated area. So when we are.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
It would make sense if that was ag, because if it wasn't, that would just be so logical to annex in, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously annotation is not on tonight's agenda, but I, I believe it's an ag parcel and we can confirm that. There's nothing else for folks to understand, but they're looking at the mapping process. But it is obvious our boundaries are irregular.
Yeah, thank you for that clarity. All right, so I think James went over the timeline a little bit, but this is the timeline for the upcoming outreach meetings. So tonight, we are having a community outreach meeting going forward, January eleventh. It will be the introduction of the first set of maps. February eighth is the introduction of the final maps. And then on March eighth, your council will vote on the final maps.
How about, let's let Gabrielle finish and then we can have questions?
Yeah, okay, I was just going to ask if there was a, she would put all those districts together for us to see those proposed that she just did.
Oh yeah, absolutely, I can put that back up at the end of the slides. So some feedback that we are asking from the community and asking what changes you would like to see or what community points of interest should stay together. Are there areas that you would like to see in separate districts? And what areas could be moved to another district to help balance population? So as we talked about earlier, there are some, there are some districts that maybe have too high of a population right now or too low of a population to have equal and balanced districts. So looking at, you know, where can population be moved is, is really good too. And in the map you're asking about, here it is. And that is all I have for you, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them now.
Thank you, Gabriella. Questions? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. And we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We have one comment, Jeffrey Starkweather.
Before we move on, I just want to ask if this is a good time to do the District R presentation or if you want to take public comment first?
If I could recommend, I think we would suggest taking, demonstrating the software first and then taking public comment. That way the public comment can get a sense of what the software looks like.
Yeah, thanks for me, Jeffrey. One moment. We'll get to you.
All right, perfect. Can you see that all right? Okay, so this is the District R website for the city of Ojai. It's districtr.org/events/ohai. And you'll know you're in the right place when you look up here and it says in big letters, tag Ojai. So when you get to the page, you'll see a lot of information just about redistricting and why it's important. If you go down a little further, you'll see two options here. The first option is to, to build districts based on twenty twenty census and the data. And then the second one is drawing maps based on community of interest. So your voice and your opinions on why your community is a community. And truly, if you can make the argument that your community of interest is a community of interest, it likely is a community of interest. Down here, if you scroll down a little further, you'll see public gallery. So anybody that submitted a map, their map will be shown right there in the public gallery. And you also have the option to save a map and come back to it later, like a draft map. And that will be in the works in progress area that you can come back to. And finally, at the bottom, there's some information on our firm, Redistricting Partners, and some more about the twenty twenty census data. So let's get started on the maps. For tonight, I'm going to show you a community of interest demonstration. So if you see here, you'll see the map. And you can scroll in and out using the pan, you're using your mouse, going in and out. Or if that, or another option to zoom in and out is by going to the top left and you can zoom in with the plus button or zoom out with the minus button. To start drawing, you will go up here to the top right. Well, one thing I want to point out too is to drag your map around, you use this hand right here, just click on the hand and pull it around to where you want it. And then once you're ready to start drawing, go to the paintbrush up here on the top right. And you can draw your community of interest as big or as little as you want. And so you can just start drawing and clicking where you want to draw your community of interest. And if for some reason you don't like it, you can go to the erase button on the top right and start erasing. And then if you want some more information on the community that you're drawing, you can go over it with the magnifying glass and it will give you some information on whatever census block you're scrolling over. So for example, here, the white population is nineteen. Over here, you'll see Hispanic. Over here, you'll see Hispanic population of six, Asian population of one, and so on. If you want to draw more than one community, you can click the plus sign here and you'll see more colors show up. And you can click wherever you like. And sometimes you might feel like your communities overlap a little bit, that can be the case. So if you click in the same area that another community is in as well, it'll come up this green color. And then when you are ready, you can name your community. So naming your community is so important for us to understand where your community is at. And then down here, you'll describe your community. So tell us why it's a community of interest. Are there shared cultures? Are there shared interests? Are there issues that your community has in common that you feel want to be, you want to be heard by your representatives? So describe it there. You can also add important places down here and you click new. Not sure why that's not working on my side. Oh, there you go. So when you click new, you can click anywhere you might see an important place. So for example, I see down here you have the Art Center. So you click right here at the Art Center and it'll come up with a red dot right there. And you can name your place, so Art Center. Describe why this location is important. Once you're done with your map and you're happy with it, you can go up here to save. And when you save it, you want to name your plan. So you can name it the city or you can name it whatever neighborhood is specific to what you've drawn. If you're not ready to submit it as a final map, you can save it as a work in progress and save it as a draft. And importantly, too, is to save this URL. You can copy this anywhere you want and save it where you'll remember if you want to come back to it later. Finally, in the top right, you'll see these three lines. And here you can click a new plan or you can print the plan that you have drawn. And you can print this through a PDF. And once you're done and you've printed it, you can submit it in person or you can mail it. And you can also export it as a shapefile here and email it in or share it with your friends, which we recommend because the more we hear from you, the better. And that is all. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to take those now.
I have a question.
Thank you, Gabrielle. Yep, Suzie.
Yeah, so if they submit, can the public immediately see it?
Yes.
Okay.
So as soon as it's submitted, it'll go to this page here in the public gallery. And then if it's saved as a draft and it's not ready to be fully submitted, it'll be saved in Works in Progress.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Gabrielle, is your phone number or email address, or if anyone needs to get hold of you to help, to have someone in your office help navigate this system? Is someone available? Are you available? Or how does the public get hold of your office? Is it somewhere on the front page of this?
Yeah, absolutely. I think questions can be submitted through staff. And then from there, we can work with the staff to get questions answered.
And where's that address?
Yeah, let me jump in. So we created the redistricting page and the redistricting page has contact information on it. And then tomorrow, like I said, we're going to post on our front page and on our Facebook page information on District R and this. And so in that we'll include contact information. It will be staff first, which will be somebody from the city manager's office, so.
Yes, so basically the public gets a fresh start. They will see a non-district map of the city of Ojai, correct? And there's no like hints as to what the current districts are. Am I understanding that right?
Yes, correct.
And then Mayor, Gabrielle, does your name get attached to the, to anything that's submitted? Or is it just submitted blank?
Your name is not attached unless you want to add your name when you're saving your plan. And if you want to add your name, you don't have to use your actual name. If you want to remain anonymous, you can use a different name. That's totally okay.
Why I ask that is I've made it personal to myself that I am not going to participate in this.
Yeah, I'm not either.
And so I've just taken that on myself. So if I ask these questions, it's because I haven't been to the site and I'm not going to go to the site. I don't want to participate in this. I think this is a public opportunity and a public responsibility. And then ours is to go out and earn your trust and to earn your vote.
Any other questions for Gabrielle? Okay, thank you very much, Gabrielle. Very innovative and wonderful to have that public participation. So thank you so much for helping. All right, we'll open here, yes, thank you. We'll open the public hearing with Jeffrey Starkweather and then Bill Miley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and residents of Ojai. I'm Jeffrey Starkweather. I am the vice chair of the Ojai Democratic Club, not that that's relevant to what I'm going to speak about. In some ways, what I'm going to say, I don't even know if it's relevant, but if it is, I would like you to think about it. The reality is, this is kind of a joke for Ojai. Because the whole purpose of this law was to enhance minority voting and going against that large systems where they didn't get a chance to vote. If you look at the numbers here, our minority, which is Hispanic, 16% of the population, 10% of the voters are spread out. So we've only had one Hispanic council member in my time, Severo. And he won because it was a multiple candidate election. He was able to concentrate vote on him. We call it single shotting in where I'm from, in North Carolina, although I'm from here originally. I think we ought to think about, and I don't know if this is legal or not, but think about, first of all, I don't even think we should have this system. We should have at large, but maybe you can't do that, you're afraid of the legal costs. But why couldn't we have a hybrid system? And say have three districts. These districts are so small, 1,500 to 1,400. And I've done politics, I know about running elections. And it is very easy to manipulate that if you had a group with a lot of money that could throw money at a district. Think how many times you could hit postcards with only 1,500 people and canvas. So my feeling is, if we could go to something like three districts, at least that would spread it out a little more. It's not going to make any difference demographically, because the Hispanics are still going to be spread out and have possibly two at large. Now, you've got a mayor, so there's one way to deal with that. The mayor could be the sixth commissioner and not vote during, unless you have a tie. Or the mayor could be one of those seats and then there's an at-large person. You could have two people at large, not have a mayor who's elected separately, and those two would alternate being the mayor. I don't know exactly how this could be done, but it seems to me if you really want to give Hispanics in this city, the only other communities of interest I can think of would be money, wealth. That's the only other division of our town, and I don't even know that that would be true. So this whole game of looking for communities of interest is a joke. It is a joke. If we care about Hispanic representation, oh, I'm done.
Time.
Sorry. If we care about Hispanic representation or having real democracy and accountability, I think we ought to go to a hybrid system. So we have at large. If you had two at large running at the same time, then the minority population will have a better chance of getting a representative. The way we are now, we're just going to stay lily white and no representation of minorities. And the system is backfiring on us in terms of the law's intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. All right, next we have Bill Miley.
Good evening. For the record, I am Bill Miley. A month or so ago, I tried using the map development. And I wasn't very good at it. It was really challenging. So I assumed that I would get better or it would get better. But the question is, how do I know how many people will live in a particular, or live in at 1,000 North Avenue, as an example? And I understand that will show up, okay. I assume when you're finished the district, the computer will tell you all the population demographics. I also assume the purpose is to put a number of people, balanced ethnicity, gender, children, families, ages, and in my case, senior, senior folks like me in all the districts, so it would be all the same percentage. Two of me here, two of me there, two of me here. Okay. We have areas of large lot homes and we have areas of small lot homes. It seems to me that we would be really mistaken if we have all the big, large homes that live together in one district or all the little homes that live together in one district. They should be mixed up. It seems the key is to have folks who are our residents and citizens and our electorate be able to influence their elected councilperson or the person who will be their elected councilperson. You'd be able to meet them, call them, email them, write them, and have councilmembers initiate contacts, too. So I would like to see a protocol by the city council for citizen council member contacts that all of you agree, every year, each district councilperson will have four public meetings, advertised, promoted, supported by the city. Also, that it would be easy to contact you and that there would be a contact coming back saying, I got your message. Because in the past, you send a message, you never know. And I would also like to see us replicate what they do in the federal government and state government, that each elected official has an official website. Steve Bennett. I like that a lot. And you could put a really nice looking picture there, too. That'd be fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Gail, any public comments on Zoom?
We have one so far. I'll bring him in a moment. But let me say to anybody who's watching this over Zoom that if you are here to comment on this agenda item, if you would please use the raise hand function and raise your hand on Zoom, I will call on you. And the first person we have is Steve Quilisi, and I will bring him in. Mr. Quilisi, you can go ahead and speak.
Thank you. I find this map drawing very interesting. I think there was a small error in the map that was shown by the consultant in that I think it's District Three includes two parcels to the south of Aliso and the west of Signal. And I did not see them on the map. I'd like to see that corrected for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments, Gail?
No one else is raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to discussion.
I'll be happy to start these two. I agree with the first part of Mr. Starkweather's statement. I think by now, I think most of the public knows that this was forced on us by the state. And correct me if I say anything that's not true, Mr. City Attorney. And it makes no sense for a small city that's, what is it, four point something miles?
Four point two.
Four point two miles. And the truth of the matter is that most of the issues that come before us are not limited to any particular neighborhood or district. There are citywide concerns. But we do, of course, have individual residential concerns. But the council will still be voting on issues as a whole, even if it applies to a resident in a particular district. I only hope that the more we talk about it, the more confusing it may sound. I made an attempt when I was running, I had a whole handout just on this whole, what the, because I was the only candidate running for District Four for the first time in the history of Ojai. I had to be the guinea pig for this ridiculous, and I had to be penciled in. It's very important that the public, I think, understands that the current districts were drawn based on where the current city council lived. And now going forward, we're removing that. That's no longer a criteria. The public can now use, it's a wonderful opportunity. Since this was forced on us, we might as well make the best of it. And if the public participates, you could create a really nice district for yourself, right? It could be nice. And then you could elect from your district someone to represent you. It could, you know, we've got to make the best of it. And then the other question, once in a while, maybe the city, if there is progress, I believe, Mr. City Attorney, there's still some, something afoot to make this not, so that small cities don't have to do this. This is costing us $70,000, I believe, right?
I'll ask James to confirm the math, but there is a small path forward to not redistrict come sometime next year, which is that the State Supreme Court is still considering the challenge to Santa Monica. For those not following it at home, the trial court ruled that Santa Monica did have to switch to districts. And the Court of Appeal overturned that and ruled that Santa Monica did not have to switch in a way that if upheld by the Supreme Court creates a path for small cities to not switch to districts. But the State Supreme Court is still considering the case and is unlikely to rule in time for us to not do this process.
Oh, yeah, we have to.
But we're still, right. But we're monitoring that closely. And I expect that if the State Supreme Court provides a substantive ruling and doesn't just punt, then we'll be taking a very deep look at it. If they punt, then we'll see what the legislature does.
Thank you.
And just to answer the question, the estimated costs of the process, the software, everything that we've talked about is estimated to be $80,000 to $90,000. And so fortunately, it's once every 10 years. But yes, when the city did not really choose to do it, it is frustrating that we bear those costs.
I'd just like to add to what Mr. Summers said, and that is, I think it's a shame. If you read the appellate court decision, it seemed to be quite well reasoned. And here we have a loud motorcycle. And basically agreeing, the appellate court agreed with the logic of what Mr. Starkweather is talking about in that the legislation, as implemented, did not serve the stated goals of the legislation. And it's a shame that we wouldn't, we don't have a constituency in our state legislature to take the reasoning of the Court of Appeals seriously and think about modifying this law so that in fact it has, it better serves the intended purpose. Because Santa Monica proved, I think, well, you don't prove in court. You, they showed fairly definitively that for a small city, the redistricting does not serve the intended purpose. And I wish our state legislature would, would take that seriously and do something about it. But they have shown not to, and it's up to the Supreme Court, which has basically punted on this matter for how long now, two years?
Maybe not a full two years, but a good period of time.
Yes. So I just, it's a, it's a. Yes. So I just, it's a unfortunate commentary, I think, on our political and judicial process.
Well, it's what we got right now.
Yes, what we got.
Randy.
Right, that's what I was going to say is it's easy to sit back and, what do they call it, Monday afternoon quarterback, however you want to say it. This is what it is. And talking about, as much as we don't like it, isn't going to help the citizenry engage in the process, because this is the process that's before us. And so let's not overwhelmingly demean it. It is what it is, and we should accept it, and we should do the best we can with it. And if something else comes along, then we'll deal with that else when it comes along. But right now, we need the community to be engaged, and we need the community to be involved in this process. It's real important.
Yes, agreed. So please submit your proposals, everybody, and use the software.
Could I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Summers, I wondered if you wanted to comment on the expanded options that Mr. Starkweather was talking about.
Happy to briefly. So the city is bound by the government code. It's a general law city. General law city is allowed to have five, seven, or nine members in council and could adopt a hybrid system. Because we have voter-approved elected mayor at large, deleting that component of the system would require going back to the voters. But shifting to seven or nine could be done by council action, and then those would be by default. If we had seven, it'd be elected mayor at large plus six districts, or nine would be eight districts. And I recognize that's the wrong direction from what Mr. Starkweather asked for. The government code doesn't account for less than five. For a city, as a general law city, those are our options. We're bound by what the legislature's decided our options are. If we were to look at a charter approach, which would require also voter approval and more thought than this moment, charter cities can structure different systems, although I confess, I'm not aware of any charter city in the state with less than five. So for example, three districts and an elected mayor, I'm not sure that that would work. Although, to be fair, you could do a charter city sort of a hybrid approach, say, five seats, one mayor at large, two multi-member districts, each with two seats in a district, for example. That could be done. That would require voter approval, and I'd be happy to assess that further if there was support. But I think anything creative like that, long, short answer, would require voter approval.
Just thought for the record, we ought to answer his point.
Certainly.
Okay, well, any other comments? This is what we have for now, so let's do the best we can with what we got. All right, and thank you again, Gabriella, and thank you, staff, for the work on this. All right, well, we'll move on to number four, the grant agreement with the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. And we will be receiving a presentation from Chris Danch, who's the executive director of the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. So, thank you, Chris.
And we'll hand it over to Chris. Right now, I think James Hahn is pulling him in. But we are, we did bring back a, the city council had identified a willingness to support some projects, and so we did designate some funding to potentially be used. We, the city council designated $50,000 in funding in this year's budget. So included with the presentation is a report that would that includes a grant agreement and a request to provide six-month status reports as the projects proceed. And so with that, I believe Mr. Danch is in the meeting, and I'll turn it over to him to give some information on the Fire Safe Council and their projects.
Thank you. Is anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we'll share the screen here. Hold on. Can everybody?
We can see it.
Everybody see that now?
Yes, we can see it, although it's not full screen. I don't know.
Should be full screen.
It was full screen.
The presenter view is showing up, Mr. Danch, on the Zoom.
Okay.
Not the full screen view.
Well, I don't know how to switch the damn thing over. How you like that? So let me try it again. Let me go full screen.
It is full screen now.
Yeah, that looks more full screen.
Almost, almost.
And if you can just present the slideshow, now it should.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Everybody can see it? Okay. So what the purpose of this is, is to talk about the recent grants that we have and how they relate to the $50,000 grant that the city approved and the budget allocation. So why am I not able to do this? So we have been awarded two grants. I'll start with the reminder that the council that back in 2019, we went through an extensive planning process, which we reported on to the council. And we identified a number of areas of major concern that we wanted to address in that plan, which we called the roadmap, and also identified a number of priority projects that would move that process along. And of the projects that are, of those, two are represented, actually, three are represented in these two grants. So the two grants that have just been awarded are the CAL FIRE fire prevention grant and the state fire assistance grant with the USDA, and that is managed by the California Fire Safe Council. So looking at the amounts here, the total grant award, and we'll explain more how that is being divided up, is 2.7. The, with the matches, that goes up to 3 million. And this is broken down into six projects, which I'll, we'll explain in a minute. And then there is the SFA grant, which is for a local area CWPP or Community Wildfire Protection Plan. The grant award there is 150,000, and we have total matches of 176, of which the, we would dedicate the grant that you're being discussed tonight as the match by the city for that grant and dedicate the funds to this project. We also have some other pending grants as well, principally around the, one on the grazing program. We also have the County Coordinator Grant, which is being managed by Ventura Regional, but includes all four Fire Safe Councils in Ventura County. And the county has designated Ventura Regional as the recipient. And that will bring additional funds to help with the CWPP as well, if, if in fact, it's granted, but they are, they are pending. So as I said, the CAL FIRE grant has.
Chris, real quick, can you, we can see the presentation, but we also see, we see the PowerPoint screen, so it's kind of shrunk down. Are you able to, to, there should be a button that says something like View Slideshow.
Yeah, View Slides. Let's see if we got that.
Yeah, because I think if, I think we could see it, I think we'd be able to read it a little bit better.
Let's see, where is the? It's funny, because normally when I hit the slideshow, I see the full screen on my screen, but you guys don't see it. I don't know why that is.
I think you can hit F5. I'm not sure.
F5? That sounds scary. Does that work?
Let me.
Yes.
Oh, it did?
No, it didn't here. All right. We'll see if we can, I think we got your slides. We'll see if we can pull them up on our end, but we'll do that while you continue.
Okay. Well, I don't know what the problem is there, because when I, when I hit the slide presentation, I see the full screen. You guys, for some reason, are not seeing that. You're seeing the presenter view. So I'm not sure how that's happening. And it's the same thing I did last time, and it worked fine. So I guess I will continue my digital befuddlement that plagues me. So the CAL FIRE grant has six projects in it. This grant is done by a consortium, a collaborative that was formed last, was formed this year, and that consists of the Ventura Resource Conservation District, us, Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council, and Bell Canyon. And then Two Park also, Fire Safety Council also joined us late in the game. We also have a private industry partner that is part of the collaborative in putting this grant together, and that's the fire engineering firm Jensen Hughes. If you recall, Jensen Hughes assisted us with the, with the roadmap process itself, and has been actually a great service to the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. Of those six projects, two of those we are the lead on, and that is the Fine Scale Risk Mapping Program with an online digital dashboard that's be accessible by the public and a wildfire vulnerability and evacuation assessment. We'll get more, a little more into details of these. And then there is a joint project that is one, a county-wide home hardening, and then the Ventura County, county-wide CWPP update, which is an update of the one that this council did back in 2010. And then we have expanded outreach and education campaign. And then at the end of the grant term, we have a regional wildfire summit, which is a three-day event looking at us and contiguous counties. It's actually going to be a large event, but it is an excellent opportunity to start sharing best practices and connections, and that is the purpose of that. Again, so these are designed, our particular projects are designed to be scalable and replicable. So we're working on our area, but we're doing it so that the lessons learned, the team formed, the skills acquired, and the, can be applied throughout the county in later grant rounds. On the Fine Scale Risk Mapping Program, we, it's actually, it's to develop a suite of fine hazard layers, GIS layers. It'll serve as a decision-making tool for local wildfire risk mitigation planning. We are in our area, which I've described before, as our planning area is basically a slightly expanded area of the Ojai Valley area plan under the Ventura County General Plan. So we cover about 225 to 230 square miles in our planning. But as part of the fine risk, we are also doing a county-wide ember cast zone mapping. And that is being helped by, and participated in by the Ventura County Fire, which is giving $125,000 cast match to help with that. And then we'll have this interactive web-based dashboard to communicate to the general public, to be able to go to it, touch on it, and get a variety of information that you can go to as a GIS database. And this is being developed in collaboration with Ventura County Fire very closely, the RCD and the city and the county, and of course, our private industry partner Jensen Hughes. So the total cost of this, which includes the match from the county, is, as you can see, is $603. So this is, this is a very important planning tool, and one that the county fire is very supportive of, which is why we've been talking about this from the very beginning.
Chris, real quick, so we have the slides showing, if you can note when you're switching slides and which slide you're on, we'll follow along.
Okay, go ahead. Next slide. Next slide.
Chris, can I ask a question? When you said, what did you say? You said 603. Oh, there's the figures. I see it now. Thank you.
Well, yeah, you didn't see it when I was reading it, so sorry about that. Any questions on this slide before I move on?
Can you give us a moment to read it?
Sure. Very frustrating that I can't see this.
How is this, Chris, different from the map that Bob Roper made that he's presenting tomorrow to the Disaster Council?
Well, the, that was actually funded through the Fire Safe Council. The map that Mr. Roper is going to be presenting, that is a windshield parcel survey that was done in the city limits and looking at the issue of, from a windshield survey of structure initiation potential just by a trained eye driving by. Not a full-fledged assessment, but one that was then put into a graphical way as a heat map. But without, you know, but done from a windshield survey and data input. This Fine Scale Risk Mapping Program is very much more detailed. It has numerous layers to it. It's more interactive. Will contain the information from the parcel map survey, but this one is a much, much larger database, and one that will allow for any manner of high-level planning. So, for example, it'll have.
I was under the impression that map was personally funded.
It was done through donations through the Fire Safe Council.
The Ojai Fire Safe Council.
Yes. And donation tax receipts duly issued. So.
I think, Mayor, if you're asking for the city to confirm that, it was not funded through the city. That's what I'm aware of.
So it was funded by them?
Yes. Donations were made to the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, and we wrote the checks to the contractor identified by Mr. Roper.
And those were private donations?
Yes, they were.
Okay, thank you.
Individuals. So this is a much more, much more elaborate, for lack of a better term, database that we'll be putting together. And it will contain a whole number of different kinds of layers, including human vulnerability data, other demographic data. It will have, you know, satellite imagery, GIS. So it's a significant, hence the cost. A lot will be done by contractors, because it requires that level of expertise. And in fact, it's the level of expertise that the fire department itself wants to have on the project. So moving to the wildfire vulnerability evacuation assessment, this is an engineering and risk assessment. People talking about the, you know, as has been discussed, there is no evacuation plan, so to speak, like a document sitting there. And that's very difficult to do anyhow, because it depends on what happens in any given fire. So the fire department is very reluctant to designate any, you know, any, any permanent site saying, go there. Now, right now, what they have is two options, Nordoff and the Fairgrounds. So a more detailed assessment needs to be made. These are done through both gathering information and having, again, contractors look, gather that up, analyze it. And then there's a series of modeling that goes on, which includes the information from the Fine Scale Risk Mapping going into that. So there's that match drops modeling to really look at the capacities, the weaknesses, the gaps, and give us a better picture on how we can do evacuations depending on where the fire is coming from. It'll help identify the best areas to put temporary refuge areas, maybe other kind, other more equipped disaster centers. It can also better inform shelter in place decisions. So it'll give people a lot more options and a lot more nuanced response to what happens in a fast-moving fire. So this is something being developed in collaboration with other partners, but also includes Ventura County Office of Emergency Services, Ventura County Sheriff's Department, and the Ventura County Transportation Commission. So this is a very sophisticated analysis that hopefully will give us some better ideas on how to improve evacuation planning in the Ojai Valley. Next slide, please. One of the joint projects is a county-wide home hardening resilience program. This is being managed by the Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council. One of the things that happens is that full-time liaisons will be hired. One will be in our area, and will spend two years in Ojai, doing work, working in other places in our area, but we're the, we're the focus of that liaison. But it's for the Ventura watershed, but obviously, we're the focus of that. That liaison will perform home hardening workshops, do home hardening assessments, and tiered recommendations for improvements. And more, and very importantly, we, through our contractors, will be standardizing this data, both in its collection and management, so it can be used for a variety of purposes, including funding to help for home hardening initiatives that can take place in the valley. So having this kind of data come in in a standard form that we can, we can report consistently is across the county is very important for attracting other funding and for other kinds of home hardening initiatives. We do expect some insurance company participation in this, where they will perform their own wildfire risk modeling for premium setting. And we also have several, our private partner has two grants pending with the Society for Fire Protection Engineers, one for an enhanced wildfire assessment tools for evacuation, and another for the home hardening and doing the HIC assessments in the WUI. As you can see, this is a significant undertaking at almost 800,000. As you can see, this is significant undertaking at almost 800,000. Um, and there is a couple hundred thousand dollars of match to this. So this is a, I think, a very good start to do a comprehensive home hardening uh across the county, but also in Ohio Valley. Next slide, please. The next grant we got was the, and I'll back up for a second and say that all this detail is on our website. And we'll be putting more, more detailed descriptions of the, these grant and what these actual projects are. It's a little bit dry, but these are important foundations that we need to take the next step after we get this data. And so, but we will be doing, we will be reporting on this. Uh, the CalFire grant will not start funding until January. And it is a reimbursement grant, uh, so that's uh a little bit of a challenge. But um, right now, I don't believe the RCD, which is leading the grant, uh, as the grants manager. I don't believe they've even got the grant agreement yet. Uh, so, but we have been obviously officially notified that the grant has been made. We're looking at the next grant, it's the state fire assistance grant. And this is a development of what we call the Community Wildfire Protection Plan for Ohio Valley. Uh, that's well, the CWPP. This is a very critical planning document that needs to be in place uh for the, uh, our community. And we're looking, as we said before, to um have the city's grant being discussed tonight. Uh, be their match for this, and it's actually a very important match um for that to happen. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Um, uh, the previous slide, or you don't have to show it. If, if the city didn't ma- match with the 50,000, what happens to the uh, the grant award?
Well, the, the grant award, I mean, if they don't grant the 50,000, the city does have a letter of, of commitment for an in kind donation.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, uh, I'm only asking, I'm not saying that we're not going to match it. I'm, but in case there's a doubt in any other, in anyone's mind about the match, I wanted to know what happens if we didn't.
Well, we do need, we do need a qualifying match of that amount to qualify for the grant. And the second thing that happens if that match is not done, that uh it'll place a considerable hardship on the Ohio Valley Fire Safe Council. Uh, because the entire grant award is going to contractors. So to cover our, and we are not just managing this grant, we are actively doing the community workshops and the drafting. And all the work right alongside our contractors. So it would put a considerable hardship on the Fire Safe Council. We would have to seek funding elsewhere. That may delay it, and if it delays, it may threaten the grant itself.
Thank you.
Quick question, uh, Chris, on that slide that we were just on. Uh, just doing the math, the 50,000 uh City of Ohio match is part of the 176,000? Is that accurate? Am I?
That's accurate.
Correctly?
Yes.
Okay, and so, and then the uh, the total grant award is uh less than the total match?
Right. What the SFA requires is at least 100% match. So we have to have at least $150,000 of qualified uh matches to have, to have the grant to continue.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
But, but so it's one to one?
Yes.
Okay, but I've just. So it could 16, 26,000 be spent on other efforts?
Well, we have mapped out our work. We, I mean, in doing the one to one, we, we have mapped out our work uh in very detailed task uh spreads about what we're going to do. Uh, so the, the cash match from the city goes toward paying the Ohio Valley Fire Safety Council's staff uh and administrative expenses to actually perform the grant itself. There's no money actually there for uh, for any operating expenses within the Fire Safe Council. That match is required to, for us to cover the staff time and the administrative expenses. Uh, in actually performing the, the grant and producing the CWPP.
Okay, I just wanted to understand the math. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So we can see below the 50,000 will drop us below the one to one.
Chris, if you can give me one second, I just wanted to note uh in response to the question from uh Councilmember Francina. We, the city did issue uh when we made the, the budget allocation, a letter of a, a commitment letter to um to uh provide either $50,000 in kind or cash. So that is, the city has not um ma- made that definitive choice yet at this point.
In kind or cash?
So in kind would be, you know, uh, staff time, uh, you know, that kind of a thing.
Thank you. But um, and just to clarify, Chris, I was under the assumption that you can use 10% of all the grant money to cover administrative expenses, the CalFire grant? That's correct, right?
This is CalFire, this is state fire assistance grant. You can use, this is federal funds, it's different from the CalFire grant, which is state funds. Uh, in the federal grant, you can uh have uh indirect costs that we did not place in this. Uh, because we believe that to be competitive uh in this grant, and this grant is extremely competitive. Only a tiny percentage of people get this because the pool is great, because the applicants are great and the, the pool is very small. Um, we did not claim any indirect costs for this. We intend to uh basically pay that ourselves. Um, and we, there is a rate of up to 10%. You can choose a number of different ways of doing it. For larger grants, there's actually a whole indirect formula to do this. But for us, we could claim a de minimis amount, uh, but we didn't even claim that because we're applying the entire grant funds uh to the contractors that are necessary to perform the, the hazard mapping and the GIS analysis. So so, you know, to be transparent with the, with the city, um, that if we do not receive the grant, then we are in a tough spot.
Okay, Chris, I, I was gonna try and save these questions for the end, but it seems like we're doing page by page, so. Uh, the, the concerns I'm hearing is it seems like we're providing $50,000 and you've identified three specific areas that you're going to utilize that $50,000 on. That's salary support, grant writing and administration. So I, I think the um, the fear is that we feel um, that that's, that our money is being spent on those three areas and not being spent on technically anything else that impacts the valley. I've, I've been an advocate for you and, and for your organization for years. Um, and, and I, what I'm reading into specifically this grant, you're identifying the expenditures of our money. Clearly, now, if you did that to each of the other grants that total up to what, 3.2 million dollars? You'd be identifying how you were spending the monies in those for the same like services, administration, uh, grant writing. And what was the first one? And salary support. So because you haven't, I think it's difficult for the community to, to understand on the big picture that all of, you know, the, each one of these grants has to be separated and then it has to be managed independently of one another. I was thinking that all of them could be lumped together and then you manage them, you're managing all of them um as one. After hearing tonight, what I'm seeing how you broke our $50,000 out, what, what that's telling me is you have to do the same thing for each of these other grants. Am, am I right in that?
No, I don't really, I, I honestly, I don't understand the question. Um.
I was just, I was stating, I was stating what I, what a perception.
Okay.
You have.
Well, in this case, when the, when the, when the grant was, 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 was in my mind approved, uh, when the budget allocation was made. Uh, it was for salary support, administrative expenses, uh, and grant writing. What we're saying is that now we're applying it directly to a project that has produced a significant deliverable to this county. And this money will be dedicated and accounted for through this grant. We have to report in detail what our match, matches do. We have to qualify them. We have to provide documentation. So we have mapped out work for the Ohio Valley Fire, Fire Safe Council to do that is key to the performance of this grant. It's not just salaries to keep the place open. This is directly related and tied to hour by hour work to produce this CWPP, which are a great deal of work. And I will say that the 50,000 will not cover all of our time to do that.
I, I understand.
Come out of, it'll come out of all volunteer efforts within the Fire Safe Council.
I understand that. I understand that. What I'm trying to say, that's, Chris, what I'm trying to say is each one of these grants have specific guidelines that you have to meet. Am I correct?
Yes.
You cannot cross these grants from one to another. So what you've identified in this 176,000, 150,000 is how your, is some of the expenditures of that money. Am I correct? Some of it will be funds for salary, some of it will be funds for grant writing, some of it will be for administrative work. Am I correct?
Well, because we, my understanding is, is that the agreement that is being before you today with the grant agreement. That's before you for decision today, is that we will take this grant of $50,000. And we're not going to do that generalized thing we put in back in March. What we're going to do is apply it directly to this grant, which has to be accounted for dollar for dollar. And so this is a much more direct application of those funds than originally approved by this, by the board, uh, by the city council through its budget allocation. This is a much more directed thing and, and, and it is necessary under the SFA, under the federal rules that this be accounted for uh in every aspect, in, in the accounting for this grant.
That's what I'm trying to say. Maybe I'm just saying it wrong, maybe I'm not hearing myself, but I'm not arguing with you and I'm not trying to make you defensive. I'm trying to help you here by helping clarify what you're using some of these funds for. And the fact that you have to do the same thing in all of your other grants. That's what I'm trying to say here. You don't have to defend yourself. I'm all in on this money. I'm 100% behind what you do and the services that you provide. Now, I may be the only one here that wants to provide $50,000. That's a different issue. And we're not questioning that money right now. We're questioning the service that we're getting. And I'm saying that you have to provide, i- if, if we had another one of the grants in here for, there's one for $478,000. And you were applying our $50,000 to that in some form of match, you'd have to identify to us how you were spending our $50,000.
Well, I can, I can certainly provide the, the council with a budget for this grant, showing how that's done.
No, actually.
If I had, had I been asked to do that, I would have done that.
Do is at the end of six months, you'll send to this council a complete um, accounting of how our $50,000 was spent or is being spent. We already understand that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not what we're questioning. And seriously, I'm not questioning you or your integrity or what you're trying to do. I'm just trying to say, if we looked at every grant, every grant is going to have these three areas that you have to fund. You can't cross grants. They're all individual. They all have their separate accountability methods. Am I, that's what I keep asking. I'm looking for some yeses here, Chris.
Well, are you talking between the CalFire grant and the SFA grant?
Any of them, Chris.
Any of them?
Just say yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you. I have no more questions.
Okay, thank you. As the city will be by necessity intimately involved in a CWP process regardless. Um, obviously, we have no problem with reporting uh everything that happens in this grant. We have to anyhow. We have to make quarterly reports, so you're going to be getting copies of those quarterly reports uh sooner than the six months. Uh, and that will continue for the light, the two year grant term. So, uh, you know, these things are very carefully, this is, it'll be our 27th SFA grant. So we have done everyone on time, on budget, and we will continue that with this grant. These are very carefully scrutinized by the grants manager at the California Fire Safe Council.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Chris, is this, is this the last slide or?
No, it's not. Next, uh, we can go a little bit more.
Okay.
If anybody's interested. I was gonna tell you what the CWP is because I don't think everybody knows what that is.
Okay, thank you.
So CWPP is a, is a very structured document. It's actually a legal document. Uh, it's created under the Healthy Forest Restoration Act. It has three minimum characteristics or content that it has to have, uh, which you can see there on the screen. Um, a lot of the CWPPs done in the states, uh, because this is under federal law, uh, are very agency driven. But our, our goal is to make it much more community driven, community focused. And with the integration of all the planning work we've done and all, and what will happen in the CalFire grant, this should be a very robust CWPP. Uh, I think it'll stand out, uh, because everything done in the CalFire grant is going to inform this CWPP. And the other projects we have, like the, like the community supported grazing program, will also contribute to the CWPP. So I think, and what I want to talk about also with the CWPPs is that they are critical for other funding. So once you arrive at an action plan, say in fuel reduction or other vegetation management or home hardening, or whatever initiative you want. The funders in this realm of wildfire almost always require reference to a CWPP. We did apply for one last year. We didn't get the grant. We got it this year. Uh, so it's also a critical vehicle for funding the plan, which contains an action plan at the end of it. Next slide, please. So some of the things we're going to have in the CWPP is to, if you can read, the screen is up, refine fuel hazards. Reduction plans, that's something that's been talked about a lot, uh, both by the city, disaster council, other people, identify that. And again, that's critical to identify those areas and because that leads to funding to implement that plan. We also, it assesses structure initiation potential. Uh, again, that's all going to fit into the home hardening program under the CalFire grant. We're looking at assessing critical infrastructure for wildfire fighting capacity. It'll continue to support the community supported grazing program, particularly in the area of mapping of the corridor that we have discussed before. It helps to fund uh, uh, public education programs for wildfire safety and preparedness. That has been, been a mainstay of the SFA uh grant program. And obviously helps to do, do the funding strategy to implement the action plan of that, of that, of the document. And we will establish a dedicated web portal for uh, for public participation in the process. And we will be conducting a series of workshops, uh, six of them to be at the current planning. And that will be done around the planning area, uh, and those are key ways for the, the public to become involved, which is key to the plan. Next slide, please. Here are the steps outlined on the development of the CWPP. And you can see them themselves. Obviously, there's a review of existing dead data, uh, regulatory info, info through contractors, the county fire and ourselves, we conduct a hazard and risk analysis. We conduct an extensive community outreach program. Um, and we include uh advanced GIS mapping. Well, obviously, there's a preparation of the document and then a key stakeholder review and approval. Approval of the document will lie with City of Ohio, County Ventura, Ventura County Fire Protection District, uh, and CalFire. Next slide, please. Any more questions on the CWP grant?
Chris, um, can we back up one slide?
Sure.
So um, my question is, you know, I was trying to do some math earlier on, trying to figure out how much money we were actually putting together to um, um, to write our CWPP. So it says here that we got the 176,000, we got 150,000. We got from CalFire grant for fine scale risk mapping and data dashboard, another 478. And then we got 125,000 cash contribution from the Ventura County Fire Protection District. So I came up with roughly $929,000, close to a million dollars. Am I, am I correct that that's the money that you're actually managing to create our CWPP? And that our $50,000 is a part of that allocation?
That is correct.
That's a yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know how I can top, you know, go after that, Randy. Uh, Mayor, if I have real quick, um. We talk about in here. We talk about in here. Yes, a question. Okay. Chris, the precursor to my question is you talk about the area-specific CWPP that you developed and integrated into the Ventura County CWPP. How will the, how will, you know, we're in the process of adopting a City of Ojai disaster plan. Well, well, there, is there a way of thinking about how that will be integrated into the Ojai Valley CWPP?
Yes, well, the, the city is a participant in the process, as will be the county and other, other stakeholders. So to the extent that in the city's participation, in fact, Mr. Vig and I have communicated about how do we work to have these plans complement one another and support one another, and that would be the intention to do that.
And then the basic framework for CWPPs is laid out in this Healthy Forest Restoration Act that you cited, HFRA 2003?
Well, just the minimum requirement that's on that plan are outlined. It's actually very, very brief. What has developed since 2003 is an elaborate framework that has developed in creating the CWPP, CWPPs across the, across the country. And so there are literally, you know, hundreds and hundreds of these across the country. But quite, quite, quite an elaborate way of putting together.
I just wanted to know whether it's not very restrictive. In other words, we can basically fill in as we, as we see fit. That's really what I wanted to know.
Absolutely. Other than those required elements, which are naturally going to be included, we will go far beyond that, that minimum in doing this, and we're free to do it any way we want. So we can be innovative and creative. I would hope that would be the case. And I believe with what we're bringing to the table, both with CAL FIRE and the work with other programs we're doing, I believe that will be the case. And of course, whatever the stakeholders bring to the table. This is not our document. This is a, this is documented for the community and all stakeholders.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are you finished with the presentation, Chris?
I was just giving you a very brief update in the grazing program, but we can skip that if you like. It's up to you.
Yeah, probably should move on to public comments. So thank you very much and congratulations on getting a million dollars in grant money. That's really amazing. So.
Thank you.
Bravo. Exciting. Okay, we have one public comment. Bill Miley?
Good evening. I participated in the Ojai Democratic Club forum last night on fire hardening of Ojai and the valley where Mr. Dan spoke, Fire Chief McNeil, retired Fire Chief, and Brian Baker from environmental director from the Los Padres Watch. I supported the original discussion at the recent council meeting a month or so ago. My comments about earthquake prep that I made earlier today also applies to wildfire events in my mind, which we have a lot more of than earthquakes, fortunately, or maybe not fortunately. Mr. Dan spoke last night about micro grids as a high priority, especially for our city, I would say. So I support the grant as much needed for the Ojai Valley. There are a lot of details and we'll learn them. I'll learn them later on. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Any public comments on Zoom, Gail?
I'll check. So if anybody is on Zoom that wishes to speak on this item, if you could use the raised, raise hand button and raise your hand and I'll call on you. And nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to discussion. Discussion, anybody? We've had a good discussion. We have had a good discussion. Well, I, I mean, once again, I'd like to say congratulations. It's really incredible and we're really excited that you got so much money and that to do all this great work. I'd just like to reiterate what I said back in April. We are a nonprofit and we were at about 7% of our budget back in April. And this council, before my time, committed to having 50% in reserves. We're now at 28%, correct, James?
Approximately.
Okay. And the goal is to get up to 50% again because we need that for a rainy day or probably a dry day here. And we don't really know what's going to happen with COVID in the winter. So once again, and I totally support the work that you're doing, Chris, and I'm all about fire prevention. I, I also really believe in fiscal responsibility and we are nonprofit giving away money that we don't have. So I don't support that, 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 that concept. And we're also understaffed. We're at about 24 employees right now, James, and, and staff is 28, correct?
Yes.
So we're not paying those salaries at this point, which we would like to do. And so I'm going to just stick to my principles here. Anybody else?
Just a comment. It's a little tangential, but I'd like, something that we, that was mentioned last night's Democratic Club seminar, I'd like to, Chris, if you could hear me and respond to me. I, I was very interested in the fact that the, the state insurance people are getting involved in the whole insurability issue. And what I heard, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the, at the state level, they're increasingly looking at how we can do insurance ratings in a much more granular fashion than just large areas that, that tend to be labeled as problem. They can, you know, start looking at what individual properties are doing in terms of meeting particular fire hardening standards and helping people to have an incentive to invest in their homes as opposed to now they're, they get, they feel like they're, in effect, they're redlined into an area. No matter what they do, they have an insurability problem. So is this something that the CWPP could help with in terms of helping provide that framework and handshaking at the state level to really address the insurability issue at a granular level to incentivize people to harden their individual structures and get rewarded with an insurability, an improved insurability rating? Is that too much to hope for?
Well, I think the combination of the CWPP and the CAL FIRE work that's going to be integrated into that will go a long ways toward that. That's why we're very excited about the insurance participation in the CAL FIRE grant because they're taking a look. And as I did mention last night at the, at the Democratic Club was that there is currently a regulation put in by the Insurance Commissioner that is in, I think, believe in public comment right now, and that is to require insurance companies in California to take into account any mitigation efforts made all the way down to the single-family resident level in their rate setting. So it's been a long process. The state's slowly coming around to putting some pressure on the insurance companies. But insurance companies also realize they got to rewrite how they do this if they want to participate in one of the largest markets in, in the, in the country. So it's been a slow, I've been participating in a statewide workshop series for over a year now, year and a half now. And, and it is, it's taken a long toll, but the kind of work we're doing here, including the standardization of the data, is key towards moving toward having a home certification program, getting new risk modeling and getting participating carriers in that program, which is what you need in a home certification program. So we are building the base towards that kind of incentive to increase not only the affordability of insurance, but the availability as well. And to clarify, a home certification program is if you follow certain standards, the participating carriers will write if you meet those standards. And what we're doing here is a big step toward making that actually possible.
Chris, you should leave it on. So, Mayor, the, the disaster council, what's the, what's the name of it? What's, what's your name of your council?
The Disaster Council.
What's it called?
The Ojai Disaster Council.
Yeah.
It's, we're meeting tomorrow at 10:00 AM.
Does the Ojai Disaster Council have the ability to go out and get a million dollars worth of grants?
Do you want to handle that, James?
No, I'm asking you.
Have, we haven't gotten a million dollar grant, no. We are working on some grants, for sure.
Who's, who's we?
The Disaster Council, specifically Bob Roper, and I know that he's working with John McNeil.
Okay.
We'll report tomorrow. To answer your question, I know it's not a million dollar grants. We're reporting tomorrow that we have, we received a $10,000 grant and will, and we have applied for a couple, but, but no, I would not expect a million dollars in grants from the disaster.
No, I think this is fabulous. I think it's fabulous. A million dollar grant is amazing.
I'm just, I just want to clarify. Okay, so, because what we're looking at is, is funding and, and operation that can go out and get grant funding to solve a multitude of the, of the problems that we have regarding being prepared for disasters in this community. The Ventura County Fire Protection District. Chris, can they go out and get a million dollars worth of grant funding?
Well, I'm assuming they can try and do that, yes. I will say that the Fire Protection District did go after a CAL FIRE grant a year and a half ago for the fine-scale risk mapping of the portion they went, went for the zone mapping. They were unsuccessful in that. And that's actually what started this conversation was meeting with the Fire Protection District. And they're saying, yes, we would love to have your help in this and we will commit resources to this and agreed that we could take the grant. We would go, we would manage it. So it was, it came out of their inability to get the money that they wanted to do. And they entrusted their, their match to us to go get it.
So, so if you weren't a partner with them, there's no guarantee that we would get any of the services that we're looking for in your grant, in your million dollar grant. Is, is that an accurate statement?
Without their participation?
Right.
Well.
They could go out and get funding. There's no guarantee that they're going to use that funding for us.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's fine.
You know, we are focused on the Ojai Valley community, so.
Then there's another one, the California Fire Safe Council. Correct? Can they go out and get a million dollars for the City of Ojai and for the, and for the Ojai Valley in general?
No, not really. I mean, I mean technically they could, but they would have to ensure that they represent this area.
And, and that's fine. I'm just, why I want to make it clear is we're, the ask is $50,000. And we're looking at the community at large here, the actual Ojai Valley. Some call it area of influence. We just call it the Ojai Valley. And so we're getting, for a $50,000 investment, we're getting a million dollars worth of funds that can be utilized in our specific community. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
And then the last one is the state fire assistance. We got a grant from them. You got a grant from them too, correct? So I, I'm just looking at all these agencies and then I look back at ours, our own Ojai City Disaster Council. And we're squeaking by with $10,000 because we don't have an in-service grant writer. I imagine who wrote the grant was either the city manager or someone at that level, maybe our city attorney. So I just think this is a wise investment and I, and I think, Mayor, that if we don't look at it holistically, that what we're doing is cutting our own throats. Now, it's not to say, and I think Councilwoman Francino brought this up, if we didn't give them the full $50,000, what would be the impact? And Chris, if we gave you 26 of the 50, or we gave you 36 of the 50, it's going to impact you. We, you just can't say directly how adversely it would impact you. Am I correct?
Yes, the direct impact to us is that we have costed out this, the, the staff time directly to deliverables under the CWP grant. So to not have that match and utilize the grant in that fashion would have an impact on us. And, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, that you talk about, Randy, is the, is the leveraging that goes, that goes on here, right? And this Fire Safety Council has brought millions of dollars in, over the last 20 years to this area, to this Ojai Valley. So it's been a very cost-effective organization and primarily pretty, pretty significant for a largely volunteer organization, which includes myself. So I think, I think, I think we are well, well stated to be a good, a good bang for the buck.
I, I also think, Chris, that the Thomas Fire, once again, brought home to the, to this community. I'm not going to say unsafe, but I'm going to say how critical it is to provide as many services as we can in preparation for the next disaster. And I know Bill Miley was speaking more of earthquakes than he was of fire. And I know that Councilman Blatts had brought that up too in, in the Disaster Council discussion that we had a couple of months ago. So it's the same thing. This is, this is setting ourselves up to be more prepared. I think it's a quality investment in the community.
Thank you.
And I, and I agree with you completely, and I'm all about fire safety. I'm just about fiscal responsibility also. So I'm, logically doesn't make sense. And $50,000 a drop in the bucket compared to a million. So giving $50,000 to an organization that already has a million dollars and it's funded by the state of California doesn't make sense to me. Little old.
Well, we don't get the, we don't get the million dollars.
Let me just finish my. Considering that our, our coffers are low and our, you know, we're understaffed and we don't have a grant writer. We need to hire a grant writer, which would be wonderful. And so I'd really like to see that up to that level. Because we, we're, we're little.
So do we need a motion?
I haven't said anything. Do you want to, what about Ryan? Is he going to speak?
Yeah, Ryan, do you want to add anything?
I, I totally support all Chris's good work. I think we've learned that this community needs this investment. Obviously, it's getting leveraged into other monies. I think that's what makes it really, really worth it. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we, we have got to do something to, to help this community be better protected and, you know, not making any effort just because Mr. Dan's has had the success of getting other grants. A million dollars is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money when you consider the multi-year protection and all the different things that go into this. It's really, it's really tough to try and get. You know, all this fire hardening stuff is really expensive and, you know, obviously to me, the proof is in the pudding. The fact that all these other agencies are willing to spend this money in the Ojai area shows you just how dangerous it really is. And I'm hopeful that, you know, I, I, I think we should all be fiscally responsible, but I also think it's, it's worth it when you're turning that money into so much more through the grant process. And that's really how government works. And I, I, you know, nonprofits have to raise money through donations. We, we get it through taxes. I don't think that's quite the same thing. But I do think when we, you know, our, our job as a council is to find opportunities to take the little money we have in our small budget and make it turn into a lot more. And I think that's what this opportunity provides. So I, I just, you know, I don't think this is going to be sustainable forever, Chris. I don't think $50,000 a year is going to happen forever, but I am glad that, you know, when we, when we are able to do it, when the timing's right, that, that we can assure that you're, you're going to turn it into a lot more to make it really worth it. But like many things, you know, you, you should not start expecting that every year we're going to be able to do this. But it is very impressive what you've been able to do with it by getting these matching grants at this time. And frankly, it scares me a little bit just knowing that all these agencies have looked at Ojai and said, hey, this is such a dangerous area. You guys are at the top of the list for receiving these various grants. So I think it's a, it's a solid investment. Like I said, it, it, that may not mean it's going to happen forever.
That's understood. And we'll hope, we're hoping that this work is going to produce much more funding down the road. I think that this is something where the ball gets rolling. We produce the strategy and the results to take the next step. And as you move up the ladder toward more, more larger grants like the BRIC under FEMA or whatever, you have to have this foundation in order to even. you have to have this foundation in order to even begin to take, to go after those grants. They're, they're very difficult to get, uh, and they take an enormous foundation, and for such a small community to be able to build such a foundation uh, is, uh, is, and not to pat myself and the other people on our, on my team on the back, but, you know, it was a, a tremendous result for a very small community to get this.
Um, Mayor? I'd like to offer a motion.
Well, I didn't get to speak.
If we're at that point.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Usually I'm first. No, I'm, I'll be quick. I think the public would wholeheartedly su- support this grant. After everything that Chris has explained, I think he's using the money wisely. And when you think of the reality, when a, when a fire hits Ojai, the 50,000, it's, it's, it is a drop in the bucket when you think of the worth of homes, the worth of lives, and I think that it, it is a wise investment for all the reasons that have been stated, so I'll support it.
Thank you. One more thing, the kind of thing we're doing here also helps in other catastrophic events as well, right? The fine scale mapping, the evacuation, all of that relates to other catastrophic events as well. So it supports more than just wildfire safety, it provides a greater safety net for the, the community in a variety of events like earthquake and floods.
Yeah.
I'd like to offer a motion that, with a slight change, very slight, uh, and see where it goes, um, if that's all right, Mayor.
Yes.
To authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, issue payment for an amount not to exceed 50,000, and direct staff to schedule a six-month status and OVSSC total expenditure report in April of 2021.
And it's, it was my air, April of 2022.
Okay, 2022, excuse me. So, uh, excuse me, my mistake, but, uh, I think it's important that we get a, uh, not just a status report, but a overview of total expenditures as part of that status report. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
May we have a roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix?
No.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, let's take a, uh, five-minute break, and we'll be back. Thank you, Chris, for being here, and congratulations again.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.
All right, hold on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, we're back. All right, well, moving on to number five, the Planning Commission Work Program. Um, and just a reminder, we had a joint meeting, and the Planning Commission gener- generated a work list, so we're just going to vote on agreement. So, um, so a presentation, had all, James?
Not much more than that. Um, as you mentioned, at our joint meeting with the city council and the planning commission, uh, we looked at a, uh, list. Uh, consensus was reached that the planning commission would then take that and go back and have a planning commission meeting, uh, and prepare a, uh, work plan that would then be approved by the council. Uh, I believe they actually, they, they took it very seriously and really dug into it, they, uh, discussed it over the course of three meetings, uh, and put a prioritized list together, which is in the, uh, packet, uh, with the general plan update being item one, and then, uh, and then with six additional items, so it's before council for approval, I believe, I, if I remember correctly, that, uh, Chair Quilisi from the Planning Commission had signed up to speak on this item, so I'm sure he'll have, uh, a comment as well, but that, uh, it, uh, that's the staff report, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I'll have some comments after I hear from Mr. Quilisi.
Okay.
If we don't have, if we don't have any speakers, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, we have a public comment, so first we'll have Bill Miley, please.
Good evening, um, for the record, I am Bill Miley. I did study the list of five priority subjects, and then also the list of seven subjects listed in descending value. And nothing wrong with these. But what I did not see, and assume was left off, was one of my favorite needed items for our city. The item is part of the transportation circulation element of our general plan. Actually, it probably could be, um, partial foundation for this element. And also, it's been mentioned as a need for more, and has been mentioned as a need more than several times over the last many years. You probably have guessed it, a parking study. Most of us who are concerned know that the last one was done in, I think it was 1892, no, 1992. Before vehicles started to get green, before Ojai became even more of a tourist destination, before our downtown retail mix became even more food and beverage, and less local retail and more regional, before we experienced a pandemic shift of doing commercial professional artisan craftsman type work at a distance, and also before the retail downtown area began to migrate up Montgomery Street north of Matilla. And also before food service business expanded to outdoor dining, including parts of public streets and sidewalks. Since doing the actual parking study is an RFP contract run by an outside contractor, the planning commission's role in reviewing and recommending refinements and priorities is less work than a general plan or a Title X subject. I would hope that the council would consider adding a parking study to next year's priority list, and place it high on the one to seven list, or one, or hopefully the one to eight list, adding the parking study, and also giving it a budget, budget allocation. So, yay for a parking study, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, any public comment on Zoom, Gail?
Let me open it up and I'll ask. Um, for anyone on Zoom, I see Mr. Quilisi on here, and I see our Community Development Director on here. Um, for anyone else who's on Zoom, um, if, if you'd like to speak, if you could raise your, use the raise hand function, and I'll call on you for this agenda item. And no one's raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to discussion. Bill?
What happened to Mr. Quilisi?
Oh.
What?
Uh, he didn't, he didn't raise his hand.
Do you want me to bring him in? Mr. Quilisi, if you want me to bring you in, if you could raise your hand, I'll go ahead and bring you in, or, oh, and there's his hand raised, here he comes.
He don't want to speak, let's, let's make a motion and move on.
He does want to speak.
Yeah, he does.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
Mr. Quilisi, you can go ahead and speak.
Thank you, I just wanted to reiterate, um, as was said, the Planning Commission spent a lot of time looking at this. Uh, I understand Mr. Miley's request for a parking study as well, but, uh, with the, with the number of large development-type projects that are coming through at the moment, I feel that we would be better off not to overload the Planning Commission with too many other tasks besides the regular flow of really only Planning Commission can do it kind of things that are going to come before us every month. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Can I go now? Okay. Um, I'm wrestling a little bit with these, um, the whole approach of having priorities here. Because they seem to be very awkward mixing of specific topics with important process issues that affect how we deal with all topics and all, and all issues. An example, of course, uh, the general plan update elements, um, plus affordable housing goals and, and policies, we, we have that already set by council in terms of our, our general plan update elements. Um, and I'm not sure, when it says then plus affordable housing goals and policies, what that exactly means when we just finished, or at least we took a big step in terms of the housing element, that would include the affordable housing element, affordable housing issues, I'm a little confused about how this actually works. Then we get into things like that are ranked as lower priorities that are critical process issues. Sequel guidelines, design guidelines, map and policy review, that have long been council-assigned priorities that I'm a little uncomfortable passing something that almost contradicts our existing council work plan in terms of ranking them lower than, uh, formula business ordinance, tree ordinance with our specific policy matters, that I'm not sure work well in terms of, um, trying to mix in terms of priority with things like the sequel guidelines, the design guidelines, map and policy review, and the Title X update, the VMU zoning change has literally been on the council work plan now for three years, I believe, and not executed. So I guess I'm having, um, a little bit of a problem with putting these things in a strict priority where the Planning Commission literally would say, well, I mean, does this mean that until we finish number one, you don't do number two? Or, you know, how do you actually execute that priority? I'm a, I'm just a little, I'm a I'm just a little, I'm a little, I'm a little worried that this is not a really operational and practical approach in terms of the Planning Commission setting priorities, which may be at some odds with the council priorities and council work plan. So I'm, I'm, I'm just struggling with this a little bit. And then the final thing I want to say is that I do think that the issue of parking strategies is, in dealing with parking issues, is an important matter. On par with, you know, a Tree Ordinance and on par with the Formula Business Ordinance. But, so I think it should be included. But again, I, that only, to me, highlights how I'm, I think it's even more awkward to have this sort of hierarchical priority set by Planning Commission. And I'm, I'm just a little, I'm just a little uncomfortable of the mixing particular policy targets with important longstanding and yet unfulfilled process issues that we've already established as important. So I'm, I'm struggling with this and I'm not sure how to proceed exactly. And I just want to share that with my colleagues.
May I say something? In an ideal world, the Planning Commission would be sitting with us and explain their reasoning. I only know that the Planning Commission works very, very hard. Last meeting was at least three and a half hours and they did bring up that, the need for a parking study. They were discussing the circulation element. And then I, I want to ask our city manager, remember before COVID, we had the parking committee and, and we were doing some really good work, I felt, because that parking included people parking, like benches, bike parking and car parking and concepts such as shared, shared parking. And, you know, it was a great discussion with, with Laura Ward and Jamie Flemings from the chamber and myself and staff. Can we reignite that in 2022, perhaps? You know, not that we are, are already not spread super thin. I wouldn't want to start it before the holidays, but I'd be willing to go back and be, participate in that committee if, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think 2022 is realistic for, for us to, to start on having those committee meetings again. I also
Have them outside.
Yeah, yeah.
Meet outside.
And I, I just wanted to note that in, on the list, the first item and the second item are both elements of the general plan update. And I will say, having watched that meeting and talking to some of the commissioners, they took what council said about prioritizing the general plan over the next 12 months to, you know, 12 to 16 months as a, they took that to heart. They have placed a general plan update related item on every agenda since that meeting and they will plan to keep those on throughout the process. So I would look at those items as those will be kind of the standing ongoing discussion as we work through this general plan update. We have a public workshop towards the end of January that's going to be general plan update kind of kickoff of phase two that will, that will then proceed over the next year. And so I think those two, that was the logic to those two being the, the high priority. And then the rest of them were projects that the Planning Commission identified that, that, that they were looking to work on this year. In between, as Chair Quilisi mentioned, all the development projects which are coming in fast and furious, we are seeing a surge of activity right now. We have, I met with the Community Development Director yesterday. We have six to seven projects that we have to figure out an order for to get moving forward because right now it's almost more projects than we have Planning Commission time, so.
But that just proves my point because handling those development projects properly depends critically on whether, on things like having our SEQA guidelines make sense. That's essential part of dealing with those development projects. The design guidelines, map and policy review also is an essential part of that. So my problem here is the idea that the Planning Commission, while facing that development project workload coming up, would in effect not take care or, you know, be using, if we adopted this, well, until we finish the Formula Business Ordinance, we're not going to take up those important process issues that are critical to effective development entitlement processing. That's my problem.
Right, and that's why we brought it back to council. The, you know, the idea was Planning Commission prioritized it. And, and when we talked about it at the joint meeting, the idea was it would come back to council and council would make sure that we're all on the same page on priorities.
See, I would put five and six up there behind two, frankly, because they're such important process issues if we have to prioritize. And that, of course, that opens up the question, do we have to prioritize?
It's also connected.
Well.
I mean, we need a list.
We need a list.
A work list. And we can
Yeah, it's a, it's a focus list. I agree with, with what Councilman Wyrick's saying. These are guidelines. I think it's still going to be up to the city manager and the planning director to actually execute what's on the seven in the order for which they're going to be, that they'll proceed. So, and, and Chair Quilisi. I think between those three, they can come up and, and figure out how to work through this list. And if there's an additional one like parking, I'm sure they can throw that in there, too. I'm glad personally to see that they took the, the, the general plan update serious because I think that's the most important thing before them, along with the standard reviews that go through a planning commission. So I'm pretty happy, but I looked at this as it's just a, it's a seven, seven tasks. I don't, I see they reprioritized them, which I'm happy, but I still think it still comes down to four people making a decision.
But just a list?
Yeah, just a list.
I could work it, I'm happy with just a list and we add parking.
Okay. And it's the result of our joint session together, so it's great. All right. Anything else?
Nope. Is this a filing received?
Yeah, I think we had worded it as an approve with the idea that then, you know, we, the Planning Commission is able to say they have an approved work list for the year.
Well, I, I think if, if, if the city's attorney is enough to just hear from all of us that we want to treat it as a list.
Yeah, I think if there's no objection, we'll take it as consensus to approve the work plan, the seven items, add parking, parking
Including parking.
Program study and take it as a list of eight items, not in order.
Right.
And if there's no objection, we'll do so.
All right, perfect. And Ryan, anything to add or good?
No, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's move on to our final item. It is number six, City Council Meeting Start Times and Venue. So is there a staff report for this, James?
Yes. Earlier this year, we moved from 7:00 PM to 6:30 PM start times for, for our city, for our regular city council meetings. Over the summer, we ended up having 7:00 PM start times. But recently, over the last month or so, we went back to the 6:30 PM start time. As we've kind of been experimenting with those, the city council at two meetings ago had indicated an interest in, in kind of having the discussion about the regular meeting start time and whether 6:30 is working or whether a new start time is desired, whether we should set a start time and then also set a standard closed session or joint meeting time. And whether or not to continue to hold meetings at the bowl as we enter the weather, or I'm sorry, the, the winter months and weather starts to get colder. So this item is intended to allow for that discussion. We did do a little bit of research this week on other Ventura County cities' meeting start times. Most of those meetings, we did find, start at 6:00 or 6:30 with one city, and I believe it was Camarillo, but I'll confirm that. Might have been Fillmore, actually. One, one city starts earlier at 5:00 PM, but most Ventura County cities start at 6:00 or 6:30. And so again, this item is just intended to allow for discussion of the meeting times and for us to set those, or give direction for potentially an ordinance to set those moving forward, so.
Okay. Any questions, Bill?
Yes. I'm a little wondering, since we are operating under emergency order, why we can't be modifying start times under the emergency order without modifying the ordinance?
Well, we could, we could call special, special meetings or emergency meetings theoretically, but as far as regular meeting start time, those are set by our city code, so.
Yeah, the issue is the Brown Act draws this distinction between regular meetings and special meetings, and the government code does as well. For example, ordinances can only be passed regular meetings unless it's a forfeit vote, urgency matter. Nothing in those statutes speaks to the emergency powers they were operating under for the coronavirus. We could stitch the two together. I don't think a review in court would override any actions taken, but if the decision is
My reasoning for asking?
Sure.
Okay, it's that if we want to continue to be outside, which is because of the, you know, the COVID situation, it just seems like we're doing it for emergency situation reasons. You want to modify the start time because of the seasonal reality. But it makes no, it just, it seems like a little awkward to have to make an ordinance change every time you're trying to deal with the seasonal change if you want to be, you know, meeting outside because of the COVID situation. I was, that's why I'm asking if we can stitch the two together without having to go through the awkward ordinance change every time. And then when the emergency is lifted, then we have what's in the ordinance.
I think we could proceed during the duration of the emergency, relying on a council-approved alternate start time. Recognize that it's not guaranteed to work, but I don't think a reviewing courts likely to override that.
Just a thought, that's all.
But yeah, it would only be during the duration of the emergency. Once that's lifted, then we're back to the ordinance.
Okay, any other questions?
So Mayor, under that, under that same discussion, so having a designated start time helps the community to understand when they can come and when they can go and technically review an agenda and time themselves. So I, I understand, I understand why, the necessity of why we need that. I also understand what Councilman Wyrick is saying regarding, we're in an emergency and, and have some flexibility. So I, I'm either or on any timeframe. I think I'm more
Question for staff?
I think the question is, can we, can we, when we move back to council chambers? Well, you know what, I'll wait for the discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, any other questions?
I'll wait until we can discuss.
We have a public comment from Brian Akins, please.
At last.
Thank you for waiting.
Yeah.
You're not going to get sleepy in this weather.
No, I got to tell you, it is freezing out here. Okay, so good evening, council, mayor, city manager, attorney, chief, all of you. Hope it's warmer up there. I'm here as the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm here with a specific item in time and I'll give you a bit of history. That is the consideration of special meetings that, and when they take place. As a bit of background, again, talking about the downtown historic district, how long we've been trying to bring this forward. In May, I went and checked the agendas, May 10th, 2018 was the first time Historic Preservation Commission was mentioned. February 12th, 2019 was our last joint council meeting together where we talked about the historic downtown district. We kind of came away from that thinking we had a thumbs up and budget discussions took place. There were a lot of questions on the amount we suggested. We kind of wondered if that had gone down. So we were concerned about that. And so when we came to go to the March 13th, 2020 joint council meeting, all ready to talk and, and get a thumbs up, five hours and 44 minutes before we were going to hold that meeting, I, it was canceled, COVID, five hours and 44 minutes. So that happens. What we did was we formed a joint council, our joint ad hoc committee, we'd been working, having monthly meetings down to weekly meetings down to three weeks. We finally set a meeting that was going to be September 12th, or going to be October 12th, excuse me. I was, we got our time down. We talked to Councilman Haney. He said, hey, do your presentation for half the time that you have, the one hour allotted. We got it down to 25 minutes. I was bragging to Chairman Cybert Tuesday morning and he said, well, you know, you only got 30 minutes. And after I pulled my head out of the ceiling, I said, yeah, that's not going to work. We've been working for 18 minutes to get this. I ended up talking to Mayor Sticks, who was very nice to listen to me, made the mistake of asking, so how you doing today, Brian? But was very helpful with her ideas. And so I'm coming to you because we, we did everything we were supposed to. We had a special meeting we called to practice it. We, and again, we found out we only had 30 minutes, like just the Wednesday before the council meeting, in case you're wondering why it got canceled two weeks ago. So again, I'm here because we have a great presentation that we have worked very hard to present to council in a joint meeting that we'd prefer to be one hour consistently. And so I am here asking, please, to think about us when you're scheduling the meetings going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Jeffrey, do you want to speak?
I think it would be useful, particularly in the wintertime, to start the meetings a little earlier. I, I wouldn't be against 5:30 that people don't, plus if you have, because I was just talking to some younger families about trying to recruit to get involved in government. And they talked about their families, you know, and they need to get home, get to put the kids in bed or whatever. So the more we could start earlier, six or 5:30. And secondly, if we have items, if, if it were possible to have them as close to time certain as possible, so that people know when they can come and get out, you know, not all of us are going to be like me and Bill and just stick around the whole time. The second one is like tomorrow, there's going to be a disaster council meeting, but that is a Zoom meeting, I understand. And I personally hate Zoom meetings. I don't feel that I can really get engaged and observe people and they observe me. Why is that kind of meeting not outdoors? It's during the daytime, 10 o'clock. I just don't see that. So I think I would encourage more, particularly these commissions, whatever, that are meeting in the daytime, that they do them outdoors. And I don't know what facility would be best for that, but it would be, I think it would be more conducive to community input and interaction among everybody involved. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeffries. Sir, can we get your full name for the record? Can we get your
Jeffrey Starkweather.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, and one more, Mr. Miley.
Bill, you're still here.
I forgot where I live. If I'm going to come here, I might as well make the most of it, speak on everything. I admire the council's wish to protect everyone from getting exposed to the coronavirus by holding meetings in this nice living bowl. With the time of council start question, 6:30 or otherwise, 6:30 is fine for me because waiting 31 minutes until seven is just kind of a waste for me. But I don't have young children and I'm retired. What about families that have to deal with their little children, their cooked children and such? Maybe being later would be better. Also, I don't have any idea, the venue that we have at the bowl, there are a few attendees. Also, Zoom invites are low. How many TV website viewers? I don't know. It seems to me that the time, day and location needs to be decided It seems to me that the time, day, and location needs to be decided for the best entrance of the public. And I don't know what that is. Maybe we need to do a representative sample survey of folks' opinions, interests to actually promote more involvement. I'm writing around the agenda here. The key need could be aligning what the council does and how it does it with the public's interests, their needs, and their schedules. So I think a sample survey might be a good way of getting some direction and maybe getting more people's involvement about the government that structures the environment that they live in. Thank you. And I like the government. Bye.
Thank you, Bill. Gail, any public comment on Zoom on this item?
Let me check. If anyone who's on Zoom would like to speak on this agenda item, if you could use the raise hand function and I'll call on you. And nobody's raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to discussion.
I just, I think earlier if we're outside needs to be like that.
It was beautiful at 6:00.
It was beautiful at 5:00.
Yeah. I'll come as early as everybody else can come.
I would definitely support earlier.
Or outside.
I would.
Yeah.
And the reason is just what Bill said. There's just too many people with families that can't make it. If, if we want the, the older citizens of the community to come, you know, the retired group, you know, people that don't have children, you know, it's easier for them to adjust their schedule if something on the agenda is important. You know, but the only thing I'd be in favor of coming earlier for are closed sessions. Because we don't know sometimes how long a discussion is going to take. So I think we limit ourselves on a closed session when we go 6:00 to 7:00. If the city manager thinks we need an hour and a half or an hour for each subject or however it works, I think he needs that latitude. We do have a council member who, who has some difficulties because of his profession. So I don't know how 6:00 would impact Ryan, but I don't think 5:30 or 5:00 is going to bring more people here. That's why, one of the things I was going to bring up regarding Bill's comment about being in an emergency or not, I think if we go back, if we remove ourselves from here, we go back to city hall. It's, it's different. We can accommodate people in the room, even on six-foot centers.
It's a lot colder now than it would be if we started earlier.
And well, I'm just saying, and also as we head into fall, it's still going to get colder.
Yeah.
You know, and remember daylight savings at 4:00, it's going to be dark. So shorter days, you know, longer nights. So I, you know, again, my only concern about where we're at is, is having enough time in closed session discussions.
You make a good point about the closed session time.
Yeah, that's all.
So maybe we should give it, I mean, I think Dr. Halverson thought it was at 7:00. A lot of people still think we start at 7:00.
Because him and I talked about it specifically, so I blew it.
He was, okay. It's just that he was so late. Because I thought, I thought he was late because in his mind, it was still, a lot of people still think it's 7:00.
I do hear frequently in the community that a desire to start the meetings earlier. People with families, is that Mr. Miley who said that or Jeffrey? People with families would like to start earlier. And in terms of retired people, as you all know, our town rolls up at about 8:00 PM. People go to bed, let me finish, Randy. People go to bed really early here and don't stay up late, generally speaking. So in terms of the retired community, I would say, from everyone who's talked to me, said they would like the meeting to be earlier.
So also I'm trying to say, I, I'm not disagreeing because I haven't, I haven't had that comment. All I'm going to do is make an observation. And my observation is if, if from my own past practices as a parent, at 5:00 or 5:30, I'm kind of settling in with my children, probably preparing dinner, probably thinking of homework, probably thinking of other things than attending the city council meeting at 5:30. Now, that's what I'm trying to say. So I, I don't get this having younger people here at 5:00 or 5:30, especially if they have a family. They're not going to be here.
Well, they're not here.
Unless we're going to allow their children.
But they're not here anyway.
So I don't, so I don't know what going to 5:30, I, I don't understand the 5:30. I, I don't understand what, who wins at 5:30.
Well, all people, I've talked to many, many people who have said they would, they would come if it were earlier. It's too late.
Then how come we haven't received many, many comments on changing our time? This is our direction here. This isn't anyone else's.
I'm just.
That's all I'm trying to say is, I haven't had anyone here ever come up here and say, why don't you guys start earlier?
We just did. Right now, we just did.
No. 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 That wasn't the comment he made.
Randy, I think Mr. Starkweather suggested that we start earlier, correct, sir?
I did, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you know, Randy, with that logic, that if they can't make it at, there's not going to be a perfect time for people that have kids. It's going to be difficult, no matter. But in my mind, you know, knowing my daughter's schedule with two young kids, earlier is better because later they, they have to go to bed. You know, they can't, at least here in Libby, they can bring their kids to the park and the kids can play in the playground while the parents come to the meeting. I mean, I think earlier could work for families is, is my thinking. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but it just, especially in the winter. But you know, the two, the two things are tied together. The weather and the time are tied. And the, and the later is colder and colder. So if we're going to be meeting, if, if we're going to, maybe we should decide, okay, it's, it's tied. We have to, it shouldn't be this complicated, right? It should, but for some reason it got complicated. It seems to me that if we want to keep meeting outside, that we need to start earlier. That, I, I mean, that's logical in the winter.
Well, here's, here's the question to staff. If we go back to city council and we open the doors and we keep our Plexiglas up and we keep our six feet, do we have to be masked in that meeting?
Technically, right now, under county health orders, yes, we would have to be.
And that means anyone coming into that building has to be masked and it has to be six feet from each other.
Correct. And then also just a note that I don't think got much publicity, but the county health officer did put a notice out to all cities advising them not to have indoor council meetings at this time.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where I'm coming from. If we, I, I think the, most people prefer the outside format. Given that constraint, which implies maybe we try six.
And. Listen, I have no dog in this fight. You guys.
There you do.
You guys figure out, you guys figure out what you want to do.
You have a dog in this.
I'm available at any, at any time.
I'd go earlier if it was up to me, but I, you know.
I would also.
Yeah, so.
Ryan, do you want to comment?
If you want to start at six and we're going to have closed sessions, the simple answer is I won't be able to attend all of them.
Well, yeah.
You can't change that?
No, I, I can't. I, I, I work till 5:30 or 6:00 every night. And that's saying we would have a half hour to an hour of a, potentially of a closed session, and then we go from 6:30 to 9:30. That's no opportunity to go home, to change, to eat dinner, to do any of those things on a personal level, and that means I can't perform my best. I think the reality is maybe we could find ways to not take so long to have our council meetings, which would also solve the problem.
And we are self-imposing. We could decouple closed sessions from regular sessions if we have to. It's a price of being outdoors, too.
And, and we're the only council in the county who's trying to do anything outside. I handle APCD meetings with twice as many council, you know, twice as many members through Zoom. You know, Zoom's not perfect, but it's hardly the worst thing ever. Self-imposing the cold on, I mean, there's a reason I'm not there. I, I was freezing the last time and I don't want to be in a situation where I feel like at the end of the meeting, I, I miserable being there. I mean, it was not fun a couple of meetings ago, so I just, you know, if we're, but if we're going to have, you know, 6:00 is usually doable. It's close. It doesn't leave me much time. But if, if we want to have closed sessions before a 6:00 meeting, I just, there, there are going to be times where I cannot attend.
Can we consider during the closed sessions on the alternate Tuesdays or something like that? Is that complicated? Does that mean that Matt has to come to Ojai four times a month instead of two?
I will make it work. Do not set your schedule. I will meet your schedule, whatever it may be. And depending on the subject, I can always join by Zoom. Some closed sessions I need to be here in person.
That's true.
Others I can join by Zoom, but please don't make a decision based on me. I will meet your schedule.
What, what I would suggest, that would work, but if we were going to do that, I would suggest the closed sessions would, would obviously, there's no reason to do all the setup and everything at the bowl. So we do those via Zoom.
Yeah. And we're, we're doing this to accommodate. I remember we had this conversation and the, and this was the reason we didn't start earlier because we, we want Ryan to be present. Yeah.
Well, and I don't think it's just me. I mean, I was around when this council changed it to 7:00 back in the day, and it was for the same reason that it was input from the community that said the meetings were starting too soon. And back then, they were having closed sessions sometimes after, after the meeting. But there was a lot of community members who came out and said it was too early. Now, 7:00, I understand. I mean, that's why we went to 6:30. But I, I think that, you know, the working class, especially you look at the average commute for Ojai residents from where their job is. And if you look at the attendance out there, this bowl thing is not getting a bunch of people there at night. I mean, there is not more people suddenly at council meetings because it's outside than when they were inside. And I got to say, most people I've talked to said they don't love that it's outside, that they said they wouldn't come because it's cold and a long walk. And I don't think people are going to bring their kids to the park in the night and, and the cold and
No.
and all that. I mean, I, I just don't, I, I don't really see it. And you know, if, you know, if, if people don't want to use Zoom, I understand it, but they're definitely not showing up in droves at the bowl.
It's winter. It's winter now. Yeah.
You know, I mean, I, I was all for it when we were, you know, it was a little warmer and whatnot. I mean, when we first started, it was 100. So we were worried about it being too hot. But I mean, you know, it, it all depends on whether, we've already kind of cut our, by moving to 6:00 or, excuse me, 6:30, we've already stopped having longer closed sessions, which chopped us off a few times from having a full discussion. So, you know, going any earlier, I think, is, is, is a lot. And I'm always concerned that it feels like no matter what we do, we're going till 10:00. So the earlier we start, it means the meeting's a little bit longer.
It's the empty closet syndrome, Ryan. Your closet, fill it up. Yeah.
Here's, here's one other comment, because like I said, I, I don't care. I'll go with what the majority wants to do. But it's interesting that along with Mr. Starkweather's comment about starting early, he also said, you know, and also it'd be great if you guys kept on schedule on your agendas. So who else other than this council in Ojai could spend 25 minutes, if not 30, talking about something as irrelevant as this?
As far as I know, every council.
This is irrelevant.
Well, we have to make a decision. So I disagree with you, Randy, because we need to make a decision, so it's relevant. And because of COVID, everything has shifted. We're outside, so things are different. So we've got to make, got to come to some consensus. So I would say it's quite relevant. And I would, I mean, if, if Ryan's okay with it and we can start at 6:00 and have closed sessions on a different date.
I'm, I'm okay trying that, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'm happy with anything, actually.
Okay.
I really just want to get it settled.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we begin meetings at 6:00 PM.
Jesus.
And we will, hey, Randy, do you mind refraining from making side comments while I'm speaking?
No.
You will refrain or you won't?
I'll try to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, your pleasure, sweetie.
Wow. Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion that we start at 6:00 PM, have closed sessions at a, another date.
Would you be willing to, I mean, maybe this is not necessary, maybe it's a given, but I consider 6:00 PM as the winter hours and summer hours 7:00 PM because it's hot. And people go to the beach. It's just a different, you know. But other than that, I don't think we should ever change it again because people are going to get confused.
6:00 PM for now.
Okay, and a round number is easier to remember.
Yeah, I like the round number much better. Yeah.
I will second that motion.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
I'll abstain because it's irrelevant.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the council members' reports.
No, don't have one.
No, just remind our storytelling festival is this weekend, so it's the 20th anniversary, so right here in Libby Bowl. It'll be great. It'll be great.
No, even the town, yeah, that storytelling would be great.
Okay, moving on to city manager's report.
It's been mentioned a couple of times, but just quickly, disaster council's meeting tomorrow at 10:00 AM. Those meetings are recorded and available to be viewed on the, the website as well. And then later this week, I believe Friday, or I believe it's Friday, is the Budget Committee meeting as well. So we'll have a, a couple of meetings people can, can watch or join in via Zoom, so.
Mayor, if I may. James, can we get copies of the minutes distributed to council? And can we also get a year-ending summary of what's been discussed, what's been accomplished, and what the goals might be for that group?
Yeah, I, I think that would be fine. I'll confirm it with the disaster council tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, any, any future agenda items? Okay, all right. Thank you very much for a fruitful meeting, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
James is hunched and keyboarding.
Thank you.
I was just commenting, he's, you were hunched and keyboarding there, so I was just.